This is the call to order for the City of Dunellen's Special City Council Budget Workshop, July 20, 2022. It is now 3:05, 3:07 PM. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As it is our tradition, just please remain standing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to give some words of wisdom or even some spiritual advice? Ms. Williams, if you would like, so you don't have to go to the podium, maybe you can do it from here.
Father God, we come thanking you just because of who you are. We thank you for the gathering here, Lord Jesus. We pray in the name of Jesus that you will lead, guide, direct. We need wisdom, understanding, discernment that you give, God. In Jesus' name we pray. We can do nothing without you. Amen.
Thank you very much. Have a seat. Ms. Odom, we're ready for a vote call.
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Meacham, I'm here. Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Cabbage. President Smith. Finance Officer.
Here.
Troy Sider, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Georgina Seck, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Donowski, Records Board.
Here.
Lieutenant Dobbs.
Here.
We do not have legal council present tonight. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall bulletin board on Wednesday, July 13, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Just a couple things before we get started. If you have any bringing device, please turn it off. If you elect to speak, you'll be given your three minutes. Please give us your name and address. As I normally say, this is a small group. We appreciate you coming. Budget workshops are not the most interesting things to listen to, but they actually are maybe the most important things we do in that we're basically making decisions how your tax dollars are going to be spent, our tax dollars. Please keep in mind, everybody, that sitting at this dais is a resident of the city, and these are our tax dollars that we're talking about also. Have to remind ourselves of that. Before we get started, counsel, I would ask, we don't have it on the agenda, but I do like to offer public comment before we get started, just to see if anybody can embellish or give us some information before we start. A resolution that we passed recently does put public comment on both ends of a workshop, the general workshop, but it didn't say special workshop. Does anyone have an issue with anybody speaking before to give us some information?
The crowd's pretty big, but they'll keep it down.
Okay. Might be a resolution we need to take a look at. I didn't realize it was written that way. So what I like right here on this one, if you want to speak to a subject that isn't pertaining to this, you can. What I would really be interested in is if you've done your homework and you've gone through the budget, if there's anything you would like to point out to us ahead of time so as we wade through the budget, we can focus on maybe something that you're pointing out so we don't have to go back and readdress something that we could take care of head on. So a change of the agenda is we are going to start off with council permission, approval, to allow anybody who would like to speak at this time, you can speak. And then at the end of discussion, you will have an opportunity to comment also. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before we get started? Ms. Odom, anybody zoomed in?
No one with a hand raised.
Okay. Very good. All right. So I feel good about that. You had an opportunity to make your comments before we get going. All right. Now we go to agenda item number one. This will be your 2022-23 proposed budget. I'm sure, Ms. Smith, this is yours, correct?
We have Troy offered to present.
Here. We're ready to go.
All money is Troy.
We're going to focus on the budget summary, counsel, that you should all have a hard copy. Mandy, that's file number one in the council chair. And I'm going to start on page one.
Jan. How sorry is it?
No, it's the baby. It's the longest here.
The long one.
That little one is basically for you to take on the molar.
Maybe is there anybody who can roll that screen up sort of, let us can see a little bit? Does that help out there? Help you can see it a little bit? Thank you.
And I'm going to focus on the highlights and throw in a bunch of other information. Counsel, as promised, the revenue and expense amounts have changed from the last presentation. This budget has been prepared at 6.5 mils, even though at your certification of taxable value, you did adopt a proposed mileage rate of seven mils. I still focused on 6.5 mils, and I'm presenting to you a balanced budget. We are still waiting on some items, which I'll get to a little further down, but I wanted to start out with that on July 30, on July 1, the property appraiser certified the city's taxable value, and the city experienced an 8.7% increase in citywide value. This equates to add the lower proceeds of $119,526. Dunellen's CRA contribution will increase $38,928 over fiscal year 2122. The net effect to the general fund budget will be $80,598. That is because the $119,000 is 100% of the proceeds. We do not ever budget 100% of the proceeds because of early pay taxpayers. When you can pay, in November, you get a discount, and by keeping it at 95%, we can pretty much count on those proceeds. New items, a part-time police officer, cost of $21,472. A new full-time public works service worker at a cost of $44,986. Now, this is gross salary, which includes any benefits and taxes. The public works service worker is as a result of eliminating the seasonal mowing crew and a part-time service worker, actually combining those. So the net effect to the general fund budget is $25,359. There are backflow devices for city hall and fire department at a cost of $5,000, and those are mandatory. Archiving for social media, Facebook and YouTube, $2,700. Our financial accounting system is being required, is going to implement a required upgrade, database upgrade, $12,000. And we've also included the minimum wage adjustment to salaries. Other notable items in this budget, there is a 3% performance-based employee merit increase, $19,199. Sanitation customers will see an increase of 4% for both residential and commercial. Residential customers will go from $17.15 a month to $17.83, or an increase of 68 cents a month. Commercial will experience an increase of $1.34 per month. One real notable highlight is that we will be able to add to our capital reserves next year, police impact fees, estimated about $3,000. Again, it depends on any new developments. The 5th cent gas tax, which is strictly for roads and streets, is not being used at all for any capital improvements. So the whole amount will go into the 5th cent gas tax reserve, $58,009. And as a requirement of your adopted fund balance policy, we will be contributing $16,785 to the general fund capital replacement reserve, which is a percentage of your depreciation expense that was reported in your audit report. So your depreciation expense was about $167,000. So 10% of that we budget to go into reserve every year. Items that are still pending with this budget, I'm still waiting on a major revenue source, which is the communication service tax. That is strictly for operating expenses. I did estimate a 4% increase, and with the estimates that I did for the other state revenues, some came in higher and some came in lower. So this is anybody's guess right now. On the website, they say I will have it sometime in July. Sometimes they don't meet that deadline. And as well as the 1% discretionary sales surtax, which in this year's budget, Troy has a lot of his capital funded through that. And we're also waiting on insurances and workers' compensation amounts from providers. So this budget will change some more. It'll, I don't know if it will actually increase or maybe decrease a little bit. One thing I wanted to make note of is with all the expenses and the revenues that I've data entered into the budget as of right now, there is about a $20,000 surplus. That is not very much at all. Usually we have a lot more at this point in time. So depending on what comes in at a later date, the communication service tax, the 1 cent sales tax does not have a part in it because that's all capital, but your insurances, we may have to cut the budget further, even though we're above at 6.5 mils, if that $20,000 cushion doesn't cover anything that's pending. That make sense? And that $20,000 is sitting in council contingency right now. And if communication service tax comes in higher, I could increase council contingency. So it can go either way, but I just wanted to caution you all with what we're going to discuss today. If you turn to page three, you'll see the summary of general fund revenues as compared to earning budget actuals for this year, projected for this year. But I want to focus, and I forgot to bring my little highlighter. My little, I have one of my drawers. You know where this is?
I know.
Okay, thank you.
Can you help us out? Could you refer to our number?
I will. Oh, yeah. So what we're going to focus on, I'm really focusing on the explanations in the comment column. For line number one, which is your taxes, the very last column, which is titled difference from fiscal year 2122 budget, there's an overall increase of $113,000. This point in time, that's primarily due to the increase in add-on lower proceeds. You know, add-on lower proceeds, $81,000 of that 113. Line number two, which is your licenses and permits, the increase of $10,000. Thank you. The increase of $10,944, primarily due to estimated increase in zoning and other revenue. It's kind of a craft shoot. If people come in, you know, to community development and have zoning issues that they want reviewed or permitting, that's where that's coming from. Line number five, federal grants, you'll see $455,705 increase. That is as a direct result of the ARPA grant that the city received this current fiscal year. That grant is for $921,000 and change, and we received 50% of it this current year, and it's sitting in a reserve. And the balance, the 50% balance, we will receive around October 1st, and that is to fund Troy's stormwater projects. Line number seven, state share, $12,665. That's due to my estimated 4% increase in revenue. If we go down to line number, sorry, line number 11, sanitation, the $15,00819, direct result of the increase in waste management fees. If we go down to line number 15 miscellaneous, the 14,991, I'm sorry, 391, the miscellaneous revenue is based on a three-year projection, an average of three years. Other sources and uses, that's where your reserves come into play, where we transfer money to fund capital projects from reserves. It's actually decreasing a very small amount. We just don't need as much, by about $700, for capital-funded projects this year. So your revenue budget is $4,778,386. Do you have any questions on revenues?
Jan, I do. That number that she just quoted, $4,778?
Four million, seven seventy-eight. Four million, seven seventy-eight.
Okay. Okay, I got you. All right. That includes the money set aside for the police building, correct? $4,700?
As a transfer from reserve, yes.
It's part of it.
That is part of it. Because we have, the money is sitting in a reserve right now, unspent, and if we were to construct the police building, which is what I assumed in this budget at this point in time, we bring that in from reserve to fund that. So we have to account for it.
So the definition of a budget is the money available or the money that's been earmarked or could be earmarked to spend? What exactly does the term budget mean?
It's actually both. It's earmarked and available.
All right.
So it's funding of your expenses.
Okay.
That's what the revenue side of your budget is. Funds available for all your expenditures.
Understood.
Whether they be old or new.
All right. So I've asked similar questions before. What I'm often asked on the streets is, what does the city need to operate? In other words, what does it cost to run the city? And to look at these numbers, you would think it's $4,778,000 and change, but that includes money that's been carried over and whatever.
But it's needed to operate the city.
Right.
It's all, the 4.8 million is what's needed to operate the city.
What's earmarked and what could be spent, put in the bank.
Right. It doesn't necessarily have to be spent. Not all of it. Some of it does, like for salaries, you have to spend that as long as the employees are still here. Others, like your capital projects, can be postponed for whatever reason, whether it can't be done this year or you don't want to do it this year, this new budget year. So 4.8 million doesn't all have to be spent to operate the city, but if you want to complete everything you've identified as needed and required, you would need 4.8 million dollars.
So I guess where I struggle with this concept is on a personal level. I have X amount of dollars in the bank, but I have a budget that doesn't necessarily include everything that's in the bank. My budget is what I need to get from January 1 to December 31. Hopefully, my budget is less than what I have in the bank. So that's where I kind of struggle with the concept of this, is how much of this is money in the bank and how much of it is actually what you really need to operate?
Okay. Money in the bank.
Just like I said, I've got $100,000 in the bank, and it costs me $75,000 to live. So my budget really isn't $100,000. My budget is $75,000 based on the $100,000 I have in the bank.
Right now, money in the bank is the very last line, line number 16, 17, no, 16. There are other sources and uses. There are 1.237 million. That's money in the bank. The rest of it's new revenue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That will be, it's anticipated, we will have it all by September 30 of next year.
So that we have 1.237 million in the bank?
Yep. We've earmarked to spend next year. On deposit right now, well, yes, right now.
And if you deduct that from the 4778, that gives you, really, right. So that's the money left over in the example I gave you.
Yes.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Does that help? Does that put that in better perspective?
Yeah, that's very important to understand that nuance.
Sure. Okay.
I've got a question, and I know I'm jumping ahead because we're going to be looking at more line items, but about what percent of the budget is payroll?
Oh, I did not calculate that number. Let's see. I'm not even so sure I can really assume it at this point without calculating it. Typically, it runs about 30%, but I don't want you to hold me to that as a fixed amount. I'd rather come back and let you know that amount. So you want to know percent of budget that's payroll?
Payroll, right. Okay. Thank you.
I provide you with that.
And do you want that to include this payroll, what the employees are paid, or do you want that to include employee benefits as well?
I think payroll and benefits, yeah.
You want that brought out?
Yeah, together, the whole package.
The whole package, payroll, benefits, yeah.
Thank you.
And I apologize. I have provided that information the last year, and I didn't, I was so, let's see, I didn't get a chance.
Well, I know this is also our first budget workshop.
That's true. We're going to have more.
There's more.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Okay. If we continue to page four for general fund expenses, each department is listed. City council, very top line, there is a decrease. This is due to your contingency line item. Your contingency line item for this current year was over $40,000. Right now, there's only about 20 sitting in that line item. So that's primarily what's causing that decrease.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is that where we took the money for the Little League?
Yes.
Okay.
No. The Little League came from Troy's budget. Troy had that available in his budget, but you did, didn't you?
No, that was council contingency.
You did. I thought it came out of your budget. Okay, then yes. No, because that did not come out of council contingency. We've only spent a few thousand dollars right now out of council contingency. You had that available in your budget, and that's where it came from. What has funded council contingency right now, $2,000 for the chamber website, and there was a $250 donation to Dunellen High School. Okay. I really have to look it up. And that's what came out of council contingency. That line item is for your unanticipated expenses.
So where the $20,000? Did you say we had a 40, we only had 20 left?
Okay. No, 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 no. I'm talking two different years.
Oh, okay.
When in the budget for this current fiscal year that we're in, we were able to put $40,000, over $40,000 in a council contingency line for your unanticipated expenses. This year, in this new budget, I only have $20,000 available right now. And that may all get eaten up with whatever comes in after.
Oh, that is the $20,000 from over here?
It's in, yes.
Sorry. I understand now.
So that's why council's budget is showing a decrease.
I got you now.
Okay. All right. So now, just going down the line, city clerk has increased, and that's line 21. Just going straight down that line, it's increased primarily due to the minimum wage adjustments that we've put in place. For legal, it has increased. We habitually under budget for legal. So I took a different approach this year and looked at the actuals, and so that's what I put in. Plus, with everything that you have Andrew doing, ordinance revisions and dealing with any other issue that council may deem necessary, and he's keeping pretty much true to that budget. So we are in good shape, but I did bump it up by almost $16,000. As far as comprehensive planning and development, or community development, as it's called internally, there's a $28,000 increase. That's primarily due to contracted code enforcement. If the code enforcement officer position that we have available now is not filled, we have to be able to fund code enforcement. So that's the primary reason why this department has increased. Continuing on down, as far as line 26, building repair and maintenance, I should have brought a ruler. I'm sorry. Let's go up one line. Finance. Okay. I'm on the stage again. Where's finance? Line 25, we're looking at, right here, $15,000, I'm sorry, $13,524. Primarily, the increase to finance is associated with the $12,000 financial database upgrade. Building repair maintenance, a decrease of $15,000. That's primarily due to personnel changes and consolidation. If you go down a couple lines, if you go down a couple lines to the police department, you'll see a 380, and Mandy is highlighting, thank you, Mandy, $383,000 increase. That is almost as a direct result of including the new police facility in their budget.
That's 320, how much was that?
Actually, there's $685,000 capital money included in the police department's budget, not operations. And then, of course, some of that is due to the minimum wage increase. The minimum wage increase has an effect on every department. If we go down a little more, I'm focusing on your larger items. Animal control is a couple thousand dollars, again, due to personnel consolidation, your building inspector. The building inspector department has increased almost $4,000 primarily due to the new permitting, code, new permit and code enforcement software that you all approved. Line 32, sanitation, almost $14,000 due to the increase from waste management.
Can you explain that for me just real good? Because I know we don't, we're not in the trash business anymore, sanitation.
Right. They base their annual increases on, it's called the garbage and trash index. Like, we have, you're familiar with CPI, the Consumer Price Index, they go by the garbage and trash index.
So why is it coming into our budget is what I'm?
Because it's actually a pass through.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, the revenue, you saw the revenue.
Right.
Okay, the sanitation revenue. This is the sanitation expense. So it's not quite a wash because there are some personnel expenses charged to sanitation. I mean, Troy, that's one of his departments, and if he gets complaints, he's going to be out there. He also would be responsible for managing the waste management contract, so that's why personnel is charged there.
And that's included in the $13,555?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what do you think the, I know it's not a wash, and then we won't collect $13,000. What would we collect, about 12? 10?
Well, actually... Well, actually, there, we'll end up with a surplus.
Oh, so, okay.
And I will show you by departments that generate revenue what those surpluses and deficits, deficits are a little further down.
I thought it was a wash there, but I.
Yeah, it's not, because we, uh, waste management pays us a franchise fee. So that's, that, so we are able to earn a little bit of revenue from that, and which helps offset our costs. Personnel and finance aren't charged to every department, yet there are costs associated with me handling, you know, my finances piece of sanitation. So it's good that we're able to realize a little bit of revenue with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, line thirty-three, cemetery, about a twenty thousand dollar increase, primarily due to personnel as well. Troy, Troy was very busy figuring out where his people need to be. Roads and streets, on line thirty-four, there's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar increase. That is primarily due to capital projects. And we'll go over capital projects for each of the parts a little further down the line. If you jump down to line thirty-six, parks and recreation, that's actually decreasing thirty-eight thousand dollars, primarily due to the completion of capital projects this year. And then you get to line thirty-eight, which is other sources and uses, which equates to reserves. You see sixty-two thousand one fifty-two. That's primarily due to capital revenues not needed in the fiscal year. That's where I was so happy we were able to add to reserves. In addition to using reserves, we're allowed, we're able to put some back. Does that make sense? At year end, and that all happens at year end. So it's really what's left over. So, um, again, this is a balanced budget, four point seven seven eight million to tie to the revenues. Everything's been accounted for. The departments have, had submitted their wish lists, and I was able to work with them and identify funding sources for what was needed. So this is really open to discussion right now, if you'd like to talk about anything. Or I can continue with the presentation and hold off on discussion a little bit later.
Let me ask a couple of questions before we go.
Okay, because I do want to show you my, my revenue reconciliation spreadsheet, which will show you any departmental surplus or shortfall.
Okay. If you go to line number twenty-eight, the police.
Uh-huh.
The actual budget, not including the police building, is one million two hundred and fifty-three thou, fifty-three thou, one million two hundred and fifty-three thousand. And then you add the?
No.
Three hundred and eighty-three thousand on it, and that's what gets you up to the million six?
No, no.
Okay.
Their actual budget.
Without the building?
There is six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the building. So if you take their budget of one million six thirty-eight and subtract out six eighty-five, that's their budget without the police building.
Okay, and how does that compare to the previous year?
The previous year, there was only three hundred and sixty-five thousand earmarked for a police building.
And so when you deduct that?
This new year is six eighty-five.
Okay.
But wasn't that, last year's project was one million two fifty, or two fifty-three?
That, their budget last year was one million two hun, two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay, two, okay, sorry.
That was their budget last year with only half of a building budgeted.
So the question I'm asking, I'm learning the trick to this, is asking a question that is specific enough that you can give me an answer. What is, what is their, what was their budget last year and what was their budget this year, totally eliminating the police building from any consideration on either you?
Operating.
Police building makes it a little bit more difficult to understand what the police budget is.
So you want me to exclude all capital and just give you operating budget? Or just exclude the building? Because there's other capital items budgeted besides the building, like a vehicle. A, I believe this year, there was maybe a laptop. I don't have the detail in front of me, but like fifteen hundred dollars for something else. So do you want me?
Is it difficult to do both?
Um, I can give it to you with just regular capital, no building, and then just operating. If you'll give me a minute.
The rationale for these questions is one of the concerns of any resident is an increasing expense from a department in trying to justify why certain departments have increasing expenses.
Okay. In the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, their budget with regular capital, included no building, eight hundred and ninety thousand. In the next fiscal year, with just regular capital expenses, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand. So a difference of about sixty thousand dollars. Okay, now again, that includes capital. Operating, for, for just operating in fiscal year twenty-two, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And I'm gonna round, okay? Unless you don't want me to. And then just operating in the next fiscal year, the new fiscal year, nine hundred and three thousand. Keep in mind the minimum wage adjustment.
So what's the difference?
The difference, just operating?
Yes.
It's fifty thousand.
The difference between both, I think you already gave one, it's the difference.
The difference between the two years, just operating, is sixty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And as far as just with regular capital, no building. You got it, sixty-three? Okay.
So both the numbers are similar?
About the same, yes.
So the question is, that's, that's not much of an increase, but what attributes, what is the main reason for the increase? Sixty, sixty thousand, where's that, where's that coming?
Oh, I'd have to go line by line to be able to tell you that.
Is it, is it, is it wage increases? I mean, I'm just wondering what's, what?
Okay, let's see what we got.
The question is not that I'm concerned about sixty thousand, I think that's quite modest. The question is, what, what, why?
Personnel, there's about an eighty-one thousand dollar increase in personnel costs. In operating, there's a sixteen thousand dollar decrease. So, and again, please keep in mind the minimum wage adjustment.
So it's mostly personnel, the answer to the question is?
As far as operations, yes. And, um, the chief has a part-time officer added into his budget for next year.
Okay, and we, we will talk about that later.
No, actually, I gave you that in our highlights. I mean, you can talk about it, you know, if you want to bring it back up.
So it's my understanding that part-time officer is needed for marine patrol?
The marine patrol, and that's at a cost of twenty-one thousand four seventy-two. So your increase in personnel of eighty thousand, twenty-one thousand of it is the new part-time officer.
Would you be in a position to say whether that officer is gonna be exclusively used for marine patrol, or can that officer also be used in other capacities?
That would have to come from the chief.
In other words, in the off-season, rarely do you see much marine patrol in January when it's thirty-eight degrees.
I cannot assume to, to know where chief will assign this officer. That's why I would have to defer to him.
Okay. One more question is on the parks and recreation. You said thirty-eight thousand dollar decrease was primarily due to the completion of projects? Everybody knows that parks and recreation are very important to me. What, what capital projects were completed?
Your city beach, um, um, pavilions?
It was ten thou, eleven thousand.
Yes, thirty thousand.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand dollars of that thirty-eight thousand decrease is the building project. Even though we didn't spend that money, that was worth it.
So why is it decreased? Why is the thirty-eight thousand?
Because it's not being rebudgeted.
Oh, it hasn't been rebudgeted?
No.
But we have two more pavilions to do?
No, please.
They are, they are scheduled to be completed before October one. So if they are completed before October one, the money will not be needed for next year. If no more pavilions scheduled to be done.
Okay, I got it.
And of course, we would carry it over if that project wasn't completed.
Okay, thank you.
Another eight thousand dollars were spent on the Earring Bell Project, where we had ten thousand in there for landscaping and stuff. We reallocated that money now to the, we run over footwork, and we have nothing settled for Earring Bell next year of major problems.
Jan, just, I think chief is on Zoom with us. Is chief on Zoom? Can he answer the question about the Port County policeman?
All right, chief, can you?
Can you hear us? Can you speak and make sure we've got audio for you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the Port County officer will mostly be used for the river right now. However, our hurricane season and all is coming up. But no, he mostly, uh, for the river. The river patrol is working with. So.
That's why we didn't understand anything.
Hope that answered your question.
Can he be, chief, can he be used for something else if needed?
Absolutely, if needed. But my main purpose, right now, we're having, uh, nobody is complaining about jet skis. That's due to him being on the river. And I have him out there, uh, part-time, uh, three days, four days a week right now, for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And if you notice, y'all are not complaining, and nobody's complaining about the jet skis. Part-time dealers remain on the river.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Are there any other questions with respect to the expenses? No? Um, if you will, all turn to page forty-one, we can talk about capital and what capital projects are included in the budget.
Oh, okay, can we, can we buy some flaps bigger?
I have tried to, I have tried to shrink this so you can, you can blow it up. It doesn't, it just doesn't want to work.
Can we put in the budget for magnified losses?
Yes, yes. I'll even put that in my department for you somewhere.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
All righty, the first department is the police department. And if we're gonna focus on column, on, on fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, it disappeared. Twenty-twenty-three, um, we asked the department heads to, to, if they can, to project out five years as far as their needs, just to give us an idea of what we're looking at in the future. And of course, with the budget being a living, breathing document and constantly in motion, this always changes. But at least you can see from a five-year perspective what they think they'll need. But in twenty-twenty-three, this is what is in your current budget right now, your, your proposed budget right now. So you can see the first three lines have to do with the new police facility. And then the fifty thousand dollars is to replace a high-mileage vehicle, which the chief does schedule one a year. I have identified funding sources for all these capital items. The police building, of course, is coming from the three hundred, and I'm gonna present a resolution to you at a, at a future date to move the funding for the new police facility into its own reserve. So we can segregate that out until it's actually needed. But the funding for the police facility is coming from two sources. You had three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that was earmarked this current year for the one cent sales tax, as well as the proceeds from the sale of Soul Harbor Church, minus the purchase for Powell Road. So these numbers aren't exact, because that purchase just really finalized. So that, as far as the resolution, it'll, it'll all be reflected in that. So the chief has seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for capital-related items in his next year's budget. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, the question I would have is, at seven thirty-five, is that including what was deducted to by the Powell property?
That's including the cost of construction that the chief put in. There is six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that is actually for the construction, and I haven't done the math. We got three sixty-five, plus we received three twenty-one, so that's three eighty-six. And you got three sixty-five, so there is a little bit of a difference that would have to be made up elsewhere if these figures stayed the same.
All right, so I'm gonna use ground numbers. For two years in a row, we came up with X amount of dollars to come up with money for the police station. And that amount that we came up with was around seven hundred thousand dollars. Around, correct? Three fifty for one year, three fifty another.
Actually, it's only, it has not been carried forward. It's just been three sixty-five a year that has been earmarked.
Okay, so when we bought the Soul Harbor Church, that evaporated three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So where did the money come from for Soul Harbor Church?
That came from another reserve when we purchased Soul Harbor Church several years ago, a few years ago.
So the money that we spent on the Soul Harbor Church, that we recruit, recoup, three hundred and twenty-four thousand of it, that's been put back into the reserve that it came from?
Actually, I am going to present a resolution that it go into another, a completely different reserve, earmarked for the police facility. However, if, for whatever reason, the police facility doesn't come to fruition, it's gonna be identified in that resolution where those monies have to go back to.
Here's where I'm, I'm trying to struggle with this. This carrying money that's not used, and then it becomes part of the budget. So I know two years ago, around three hundred and fifty thousand taken out, and from that three fifty, we bought the Soul Harbor Church.
No, no, the church was purchased prior to that. That three fifty was one cent sales tax money that was not used for the purchase of Soul Harbor Church. Souls, the purchase of Soul Harbor Church happened before that.
Before that?
Mm-hmm.
So then, the next three hundred and fifty thousand came from where?
The one cent sales tax. So that's the first year, three hundred and fifty thousand was earmarked for the police building. It wasn't spent, so it stays in the reserve.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
The next year, we only budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand again. Didn't carry anything forward, just.
So what I'm trying to understand, you said we currently have a balance for the police project of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. police project of 735,000?
No. 735 includes a police vehicle.
A police vehicle?
If you look at that column and add it up, 50,000 of it is for a police vehicle, has nothing to do with the building. The 570 plus the 60 plus the 55 adds up to 685.
And the Souls Harbor Church, I mean, the purchase of the Powell property, the 85,000 came from where?
It would come from the combination of the 365 one-cent sales tax and the proceeds from the sale of Souls Harbor Church. You take the 365 plus 321, okay, that equates to 680, I'm sorry, 365, 321, 386, 686, $686,000. Hate doing math in my head. If we subtract off $85,000 purchase, that leaves 601,000 available for the police building.
That adds up to the $700,000 figure that I keep holding.
Well, it does, in a roundabout way, yes. Now, you all committed to $700,000 as your, as all you wanted to spend on the police building, all you were going to commit to.
Before?
Before Powell Road.
Correct. So it should be 80, that number should be 700,000 minus 85,000 right now.
Yes, if that's what we're going to use. I wasn't using 700,000, I was just using...
I just do that so we're not struggling and so we can come in and take.
So that's the resolution that I'm going to present to you as far as what is left from the 365 that was budgeted this year from the one-cent sales tax, plus the remaining proceeds from the church sale. That's what's going to be in a resolution to put into a completely separate reserve.
And that number will be an exact number?
It will, it has to be. It has to be. So what that amounts to is, okay, we have a budget of 685 right now. Doesn't include the purchase of land. So either I need to reduce the budget for next time to 601,000, or we make up that difference, that 85,000 difference.
Why would we want to do that?
Well, I'm just saying, that's your option.
That's not, I don't think what council wants to do.
Okay, so then I'm going to be reducing the capital budget. One of those line items will probably be the construction amount. I will reduce that by 85,000.
85,000 is part of the project. So it shouldn't be, that number shouldn't remain firm and then add 85,000 in addition to it. I think that's contrary to...
But we still have to get up to $700,000.
No, 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 no. You, the purchase of Powell Road property is included in that.
Oh, okay.
So if I'm starting with 700,000.
You have 700,000 and 85,000.
I'm going to work my way down and give you an account.
Because I will tell you, I've spent some time talking with lawmakers and people that have done these things. They are amazed that a city this size can put up 600,000 or 700,000 for this project. In fact, Representative Masu said this amount of money is so strong that applications for grants or some sort of funding from the state, he says, you'd be in an amazingly strong position. He says, rarely does a city this size come up with that kind of money and that percentage for this kind of project. So for us to say we put up 700,000 and we're capping it there, everybody I'm talking to says you guys have put yourself in an amazing position to get outside funding. And I would tend to agree. Right now, I know Williston, because I've talked with their city manager, they're applying for a $5 million federal grant, and they don't have any money in the game, zero. So we're putting up 700,000 to do what we're doing, so if we press the right buttons, we should be in pretty good shape.
Okay, you will see a decrease in your next budget by the 85,000 on the cap.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, if we go to the next page, are there any more questions before we move on?
Yes. I know we got a grant for a police car, what, three years ago?
We actually applied in 2018, and we did not receive it in two years. And yes, that was through USDA.
So I'm just looking at 50,000 times five years, that's $250,000 for police cars in five years. That's a big number if we don't get grant money to help with that.
And all we can do is apply for the grants. There's no guarantee that we get them, but we continue to look, and when someone's available, we do put in an application for them. So that's not something we're going to stop, but you still have to, you still have to budget it. Yeah, so, and again, if it doesn't get spent, it just stays in the bank. So, you know, it doesn't hurt to have it budgeted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question is a little outside of the discussion regarding budget, but in regard to getting a grant for the police station, could we not indicate in our comprehensive plan under our capital improvements that we had that 700, which I would think would also go a long ways and get a good grant?
We typically, when we apply, you know, fill an application, the comprehensive plan isn't mentioned. If what they ask for is, a lot of times, is the city going to provide a match? And that's where we indicate...
I'm just saying, I think the five-year capital improvement plan is for the big projects. I don't see how it could possibly be a negative.
It's not, but this is our budget.
Right.
This is not the comprehensive plan.
Exactly, exactly.
But yes, if we are able to do a match of any kind, that goes in the application because that's a plus. Anytime we can say we're putting some quote, so yes, you're correct, absolutely, it's a plus to do that. Okay, roads and streets, page 42. Again, we're going to focus on next year. And the first line, an amount of $921,571 is your ARPA grant. In case you're wondering what I mean by ARPA, is the American Rescue Plan Act implemented by the federal government to help rebuild America. And we were awarded, it was all formula-based, we had no choice as to how much we received. And this is what we were able, we were given, no matches required, just once a year reporting, and Troy gets to do five intersections for stormwater enhancements and repair to the Renata and Palmetto Way. The next line item, the $118,526, that is a rollover. We've rolled this over a few years now. We have a grant with SwiftMud to map our stormwater assets. You know, are they in good shape, are they in bad shape? It's all to be able to develop like a plan for future projects. Well, that grant has stalled a little bit, and we have a 50% match. It's a $285,000 project, and our piece was $147,500, and we've spent a little bit on that. That comes, all comes from the one-cent sales tax money. So we have to keep rolling that over because that grant is still in play.
May I ask why it's stalled?
It's continuously being looked at. Every quarter, we have a meeting with SwiftMud and the engineers. It's the same type of grant, the same process that we did for our road evaluation, only it incorporates the entire stormwater needs for the city of Vanellope and the area around us as well, including the state, county, and city infrastructures. Right now, it's in stall phase because we're waiting on the LiDAR results that the state has to perform to put together with the information, the data that we've already collected locally. So it could be as late as December, it could go a little bit into early next year, but my last meeting, it's starting to move forward again. But they had a significant delay as a result of COVID, and a lot of team players changed out.
I just make sure it wasn't something that, because when does this grant, I mean, usually the grants will expire, the monies aren't used by certain amount of time, but because it's not us, it's hopefully...
The neat thing about this is it's a SwiftMud grant, and SwiftMud is the one doing the project for us. So if they're not meeting their own deliverables in time, I think it's going to be on them to answer as to why, but I will make sure.
And they'll keep re-appropriating, they'll approach and have me explain the other reason for that money. So I wouldn't, I'm not concerned about losing that grant. I don't think Troy is.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
I remember when I worked for SwiftMud, sending a bill to the city for a grant project. Anyway, continuing with roads and streets, capital, the next two line items are for a couple of vehicles, one's a dump truck and one's a work truck. Then he's looking at, over the next three years, replacing his garage doors and also replacing worn-out lawn doors. So total capital, primarily, the bulk of it is grant-funded, $1,184,97.
Basically, 284,000, that means basically under $300,000 in the budget, without taking out that grant.
And again, it's all coming from the one-cent sales tax. Nothing is coming from his gas tax this year. We're able to take that money, it's about $58,000, and put it right into his reserve. Are there any other questions with respect to Troy?
Yeah, I have a couple, Jan. This ARPA grant, if it wasn't for the ARPA grant in this budget, what would the total be for Troy for his road evaluation?
Remove 921,571 off of the 1184, and that would be his capital. There could possibly be some more sales tax money that we could allocate, but that I don't have a firm answer for.
So normally Troy's budget is more than that. So it seems like because we have gotten a grant, then money that he normally would have gotten or would have been concerned for has been shifted somewhere else.
The gas tax money, the fifth-cent gas tax money, which is his anyway, we're just able, we don't have to spend it next year, we can just bank it.
So why wouldn't, the way I look at it, the grant should be a supplement to what Troy normally has. It's not like Troy gets a supplement and then you deduct from him what he normally gets. He should have the ARPA money and what he normally does, which is around $250,000.
He does, he normally gets 250...
Well, what is his, what is his budget this year?
His capital budget minus the ARPA grant.
I mean, with the sales, with the taxes and stuff he gets?
Well, the only thing that isn't appropriated is the fifth-cent gas tax money because he didn't identify another project for it. That's why it's just going into the bank.
What I would like to see is to have Troy, roads are maybe the number-one project, the number-one issue in this city. So I would like to have Troy funded as strongly as we can, and then on top of it, supplement in with this ARPA. Because we have this ARPA grant, shouldn't mean that Troy's projects are minimized because now we have supplemental money covering the spread.
I'm going to let Troy speak to this.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think I'm starting to understand and rationalize your line of questioning on this, so help me make sure I answer it properly and guide us through this. In the last couple of years, we've been getting 200, 500,000 towards road pavings or whatever. But we know that money's been coming from built-up reserves over time, one-cent sales tax, grant money that we had received three, four, five years ago, stuff like that, right?
What other taxes do you normally get? You got the one-cent sales tax, right?
And the fifth-cent gas tax. Right. So this year, got lucky, and the grant gods just dropped us a big old check, said, hey, you're entitled to this, here it is. It's the ARPA funds, right? Didn't expect it, didn't know it was coming. The minute we found out we were getting that money this year and the second payment of it next year, we began identifying one of the higher needs of project zones that qualify for that money to be used, i.e. stormwater components and road paving related to the stormwater components, right? So that's why that ARPA fund, I recommended that ARPA fund be dedicated to that particular project. But not knowing what we have available to set up for another project, it's almost impossible for me to come in here and say, by the way, can you just throw me an extra 250,000 and I'll find out where I can use it later? I think is what I'm trying to explain. So just recently, we got back the results of our road assessment project, the DEO grant that gave us the full evaluation of our road structure. Now we can identify a little quicker, a little sooner, where to put 100,000, 200,000, 300,000, right? So technically, I'm not losing money because of the ARPA grant. I haven't put in for extra money, I agree with Jan, because I don't know what extra money I should put in. We haven't identified another project for next year. But my understanding is if money's sitting in capital reserve, whether it's 250,000 of the one-cent sales tax, the 58,000 fifth-cent tax, because we haven't tied that directly to a project, this could benefit my department in two ways. One, as I identify a project, the council can elect to fund that project out of the reserve. Or, say the project that we're looking into with the ARPA funds, I only got 900,000, but the total project from 100% completion might be around a million dollars. I may have to pull in 100,000 out of reserves to fully fund without having to cut the project back. So I think, and you and I have talked about this, so I apologize if I haven't been where I needed to be in my knowledge on that, but better understanding it with Jan right here today a little bit earlier. If there's money in reserves, and I am entitled to it, my budget has not been penalized or cut as a result of receiving the ARPA.
That's, that's my main question. It's like, we know, for instance, say a million dollars, Florida Department of Environmental has a million dollars for upkeeping the Rainbow River. And then there's a $3 million grant that comes to upkeep the Rainbow River. Now you just deduct the 1 million, and now there's really only two rather than 3 million plus the one. So I just want to make sure that because we're getting this ARPA money, that your money that you normally would get is still going to you, and you're not losing it because of a supplement, right? In the perfect world, I'd like to see you get everything you're entitled to plus the ARPA money.
Right. So like I said, with meeting with Jan a little bit earlier today and hearing her explanation now, understanding that I am getting everything I need for new vehicles, carrying through with the two grants that we're in the middle of now, and capital improvements, but my road projects have not been penalized as an offset of the ARPA funds. In other words, the Florida Lottery, when they said they were going to support the education base, and instead they ended up fully funding it, and all that other money got reallocated. That's not the case here, and I've made sure of that today in the last couple of days.
The main thing is if you're, if you're happy with it, then, because this is, you're, you know, trying to fund you with what we clearly know is a priority by the residents, getting these roads going.
So to make sure I'm correct in my response, I'm going to ask Jan a question, if I may. If we can identify what's in reserves that could be added to this project or a potential project in the future? That could be a later answer, it's just an open, open question.
Let's do it, Jan.
Okay.
Since it's fresh and everybody's...
If you can do that now, thank you.
Can you please bring up, let's do number five first. Oh, you don't have this, council. This is an extra... This is an extra schedule, I was trying to get prepared for any other questions. Now, this, this schedule is the city's reserves in total, 100% of our, of all our money. But I want to focus on what's Troy's. If you go to, and I'm sorry, I don't have line items, you see, Manny, it's this line item right here where it says this first one. Right now, there's 862,000, can't see, 844, 847.
Eight seventy seven.
And seventy seven cents sitting in Troy's gas tax reserve. Haven't touched it. If he spends any capital money that we had earmarked this year, it hasn't been taken out yet. But that's what he's got available for roads right now. Next year, if that number doesn't change, I'm saying we're going to add another 58,000 to that for his capital. That could be for roads, that can be for trucks, that can be for his garage doors. It's, it's capital. That is only Troy's money. If you go down, okay, now let, Manny, if you can bring up file number three.
And Jan, while you're doing that.
Okay.
Out at 862, 844, is that where, minus the ARPA?
No, ARPA's not there.
No, 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 I know that, I know that. But minus ARPA and his, this year's budget, is that where, 862, is that where the rest of his money is coming from?
No, that money's not even appropriated in the budget this year.
Okay, I just make, I'm just making sure I'm understanding.
That's going to sit in the bank until Troy comes to council with another ARPA.
So it's kind of like, like mayor's personality, he has 100,000 sitting in the bank, but he's only going to spend 75,000 of it, so.
But he, but Troy's not spending any of that.
He didn't even talk about his savings account, okay.
Yeah.
That's your savings.
Troy's not spending any of that money this year.
I got it.
So just for clarification, Troy has nearly 900,000 sitting there right now for projects?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And why don't we have projects scheduled to spend the 900,000?
We just got the road evaluation done within the last month. So when we go to schedule projects, it could be a six-month process to figure out where that 900,000 is going to be approved by the council to be used. So that 900,000.
This is a news flash to me. I mean, I'm finding out right here, right now, we have 900,000 that could be put into roads.
I sort of am too, because I haven't looked at what's sitting there.
I present the schedule every quarter to council.
Yes, yes.
So just so you know, you all see this every quarter.
One of the reasons we limited the roads to Ohio and Cedar Street, it was within some sort of number that we had. Well, this number that I'm seeing right now is far beyond what it's costing for Cedar and Ohio Street. We could have done another two or three roads with this kind of money.
The number you see up there is an accumulation over years of time on that fifth cent gas tax, which has now been reduced to only 58,000 a year. So once that money's spent, if I spend 100% of that money this year, it won't be there for years and years and years and years to come, because you're only rebuilding it 50,000 a year.
My response to that is Troy, Troy.
But listen.
We were, council was not aware of this. I mean, I clearly, I've been on this council now almost four years. I did not realize there was almost 900,000 dollars sitting there that could be used for roads.
I have to support Jan with the fact that she presents to this, presents this to us every three months. She gives us.
Well, I think you could take, I think you could go down this council right now and see how many people were aware that we had 900,000 sitting there to be spent on roads.
And that's not just roads, that's capital.
But it could be.
It can be used for roads only, but then Troy has equipment needs. And then we have to find a funding source for any equipment needs. So that, that reserve is not just for roads only.
I do remember us talking about that, we only get about 40 to 50,000 a year, and it has been. And it has been, and that's why it's not been touched, because we've been trying to build it up. That was a thing that I remember us talking about.
I do understand that, but that, that number behind me right now, I wasn't aware we had any.
Yeah, I'd like to make comment too. If, if we were to use half of that money, that'd be a great advantage considering that materials continue to increase a rate of 10 to 12% last year, this year, and projected next year. So why aren't we moving along?
Exactly, and that's why I'm trying to be more selective about the projects and ensuring that we get the best project for the best price and get the most out of what we can. Once that number starts diminishing in 100,000 a year, remember, we're only replenishing it by 58,000 a year. So it's going to disappear rather quickly. If I dedicate 100% of that money to one project or a project zone, it's gone. But just like I said, with the ARPA funds, with the grants that we've had in the past, the other funding, the one cents that we've had in the past, we've been nickel and, pulling away from that to fund the offset of these projects, the contingencies, the overrun on these projects. So if I get into the ARPA fund project this year, and I've got 900,000, but the engineer comes to us with an estimated cost of 1.2 million, I'm going to have to come up with 300,000 somewhere. That's what we use that reserve for, we've been using that reserve for, for the last three or four years. Because it's not a fast recurring account. It doesn't, I don't get 100 or a million every year in that account.
So Jan, where does the 58,000 come from every year?
Fifty, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
It comes from the state. It's the, it's the fifth cent gas tax.
That's the fifth cent.
When you buy gasoline, there's, there's a tax on there that comes to the city.
So that's pretty, that's pretty consistent and assured, we're going to get 58,000 a year.
Give or take, yes.
Okay. How about the 1% sales tax?
That, I have no idea what we're going to get next year, I've only assumed.
But it's been normally around 200,000 consistently.
About 250, and that's only for three more years.
Right. So, but that 200,000 could go into, if we wanted, that could go into Troy's budget.
And it has for next year.
Okay, so really Troy maxed out funding would be the 200,000 from the 1% sales tax and the 58,000 from the 1/5.
You could say that, yes.
So we go full circle, we're talking about 258,000. I want to make sure that.
Troy's not being shorted.
He always gets his 258,000 regardless of what outside money we also get. He should, he should keep his 258,000.
Now, you're saying he should have 100% of the, the one cent sales tax money, when that sales tax money is for both roads and streets and public safety, the police department. So unless you're mandating now or in the future that the police department gets none of that money and it all goes to Troy, there is no guarantee Troy will get 250,000.
On the 1% sales tax for this proposed budget, how much is going to the police department?
None of it. Wait a minute, I take that back, hold on one second.
So we're estimating 200,000 from the 1% sales tax. How much goes to Troy and how much goes to the police department?
The police department is getting 50,000 for their vehicle. And of the rest, Troy is getting, he's got the 118,000 grant, I don't have a grand total. I had given.
Okay, that's okay, so I'm, it's just. So Troy's getting 58,000 plus 1, 150 from the 200,000 from the 1% sales tax.
Yes. Now, there is still, okay, if we get the money in by September 30 next year and these capital projects that are being funded by the one cent sales tax all get completed, the police get their vehicle, Troy does everything with the grants and everything, there's still going to be one cent sales tax money sitting in the bank from prior years to approximately 375,000. So in fiscal year '24, we get another 250,000. Plus, we still have money in the bank from prior years.
Or in interest.
375,000, yes. So we're not draining the reserves. Troy comes to you, okay, we got a sinkhole, that's a capital project. Where are we going to fund that? That's an emergency. Sure, we've got an emergency reserve, but why use that emergency reserve? Because we just have to build that back up very quickly where we can go into the one cent sales tax that we've got sitting in the bank and give Troy what he needs to, to repair that sinkhole.
Okay, Jan, so just for clarity, this is much educating all of us. So on any given year, the 1/5, 1/5 cent tax, the 58,000, goes to Troy's department and Troy only.
And Troy only, yes.
It's non-negotiable.
Non-negotiable.
And the 1% sales tax, which is normally around 200,000, that is divided however we feel it should be divided between the police and Troy.
Correct.
So theoretically, Troy could get all of it, or the police could get all.
Correct.
Or any percentage.
Or they get none of it and, and you all want to, want to bank it.
So how, when, when they're given your, their wish list, you have to have the wisdom of King Solomon to decide who's going to get.
I do.
Oh, you do, you have that wisdom.
Many of them have.
I identified, okay, Troy told me what he needed, and Chief told me what he needed. It's like, okay, there's Chief's budget, I see his building, we've already got that taken care of, we discussed that earlier, and he needs a new vehicle. Chief doesn't have really any other reserve to fund that vehicle but the one cent sales tax.
Okay.
So I earmarked the tax. Troy, he comes in with his capital issues. I see we have one cent sales tax money that we're, we're getting and we still have on reserve, and Troy's entitled to some of that money. So I give him what he needs out of the one cent sales tax. Now it's up to you all, if you don't like how I've divvied it up, to say, okay, we need to change things. I mean, that's, that's entirely your prerogative. I just kind of pick and choose the best way to use the money.
So as long as I understand this, or council understands this, I'm good. So the 58,000 is automatically Troy, no, nothing to say. The 200,000 from the 1% sales tax, right now, I'm going to put 50,000 of the 200,000 to the police for a car and the remaining 150 will go to Troy.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And anything else, if we get more in, it'll just go to bank. Or it could be, if Troy or, or Chief comes to you with another project or a critical need, we can still pull from that via budget amendment, but it stays in the bank.
So the amazingly scary thing about this is Troy's total funding, without any outside sources, would be the 58,000 from the 1/5 sales tax.
Gas tax.
And possibly the entire 200,000 from the 1%. So we're, we're trying to keep this city paved with 250,000 a year.
Yeah.
Well, in any, any sort of business situation, that don't work.
No, and we just don't have the funds available. That's the whole, whole issue. And when Troy, you know, got this grant to develop this master plan, I mean, it was, it was wonderful to be able to identify, and maybe a little piece of a road would only cost 58,000. Now, I'm not, you know, that, this isn't my area, but let's just say, or a small portion of a road that's, that's failing, 250,000 would cover that. So we've got a map now, instead of just picking and choosing, we've got a real map to say, you got to do this. And if we don't have the funds on reserve, if we can't get grants, then we're stuck. There's, there's, unless you want to go for a loan, but that's a whole different ballgame. Yeah, no, I know, that's, that's bad words, but we also don't have revenues to pledge for loans.
Well, that's where, you've heard me say it before, that unless we really get some real expertise and some real time to put into it, the future of this city is built on our ability to get outside funding.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't see that as a priority to what we're doing. I think everybody's doing that when you, we have the time to do it, because we have so much other things to do. And we really need to have somehow, some way where this is the focus, somebody's focus to do it. 250,000, according to Troy, he needs X amount of dollars just to maintain. As these roads are falling apart, he needs X amount of talent. Don't forget about improvement. He needs money beyond 250, just to keep it as it is. So 250,000 is, is, you know, more water's going out of the tub than you're putting in.
You also have, have some very hard decisions to make with funding roads. It's possible, but it's not popular. That's all I could say right now.
Okay.
But i- i- if, I know you're saying no, but how, how do you take care of roads? Even that's all I can say.
Even the state has issues with this, the counties have issues.
Right, that's all I can say about this.
It's not just the city of Dunhill.
So as long, as long as you guys are comfortable that Troy's not getting shorted. At least not in my opinion.
I support that.
Okay.
That's good, I'm, I'm very glad.
One last thing I'd like to remind the councils, we're on this topic. Remember that six, seven, eight years ago, the city was receiving almost 500,000 a year, half a million dollars a year in gas tax. And over a period of a couple of years, it was cut back, cut back, cut back, to now it's only 58,000 a year. So a decade ago, this conversation would be easy. I'd have a half a million dollars a year to put into road resurfacing and stuff. And also a decade ago, I could do twice the amount of roadway for that cost, right? So that's where over, over time, my understanding was the county, however the gas tax was split, county gave fair notice and said, over a three-year period, it will be reduced and this will be the final number. And we've been struggling in my department ever since. So there are funding options, there are revenue generating options, and we'll be working with Manny and coming to council.
The question is, Jan, why did we get reduced? Who made that decision?
There was a 30-year agreement as far as the county sharing the gas taxes with us. That percentage the city received was 2.53% of all gas taxes collected in the county. When that agreement expired, there was no documentation to support how that 2.53% was derived. So we were all put to task to try and figure out a way that would be fair and equitable to all the municipalities in Marion County, including McIntosh and Reddick and Ocala, and dividing it amongst us. We could not come up with a formula where two municipalities weren't hurt. Whether it be McIntosh and Reddick or Ocala and Dunhill. There was no fair and equitable formula that we could come up with. And the county would not keep the same formula, they just wouldn't do it. So there's a state formula, which brought us down 2.63%. The county initiated this. The cities wanted to keep the same percentage, let us just keep what we've got. They said no.
So at the county level, this could be changed back to where it was?
I, I, I don't know anything about agreements that are implemented, these interlocal agreements. I don't know if they can be touched until they expire, but it's at the county level, it's all at the county level.
Did we ever discuss this with the county?
We had so many meetings with county staff and, and we begged.
They just said, this is the best we can do for you.
Yep.
Which is whatever the state minimum is, that's what you're going to get.
It's the state formula. And state formulas are all based on population. So our small population, you know, it, it impacts us with all our revenues that are formulated.
Thanks. This has been very educational, thank you.
It was educational when it was taking place.
Yeah.
It was not a happy situation.
I knew it was that.
I'm sorry, what?
I knew it was that.
Oh, boy.
That started in 2015.
Was it 15?
It was in 2000, well, actually about 2015, somewhere around 14, 15. And I took over the police department, police department. Roads and streets was losing money, Troy was losing money at that point. And that's what drove the council making the tough decisions, how do we keep our city?
That's right.
And what has to be done? And what has to be done? So that's about how far back that we started, losing that percentage.
It was.
And then by two thousand eighteen was the last time we got that far back.
Yeah, they did it, they.
Reduced it over a year.
Over three years. It was kind of like a three-year period. With reduction each year.
The other little municipalities, they got reduced.
Oh, all of them. They all went to the safe one. And Ocala lost millions. You know, I mean, it's all relative based on population, but it was millions. And the county kept the nine-cent gas tax because they could. Whatever the nine-cent gas tax is, and I'd have to go back to a book that I have that defines all this. The nine-cent gas tax the county shared with us, they didn't have to. So they took it away. I don't recall how much we received from that tax. I'd have to look back in history. It wasn't four-hundred thousand dollars, but it was still money that went towards Rosen Streets.
About seventy thousand or something.
Boy, you've got a good memory. You're probably right. That sounds familiar. But yeah, they just, they needed the money, so they took it away. And Ocala and McIntosh and Reddick.
Mandy, is Commissioner Bryant, is she aware that we are in this kind of situation?
Oh, yes. She was on council. On the county.
She has been very vocal and supportive, trying to get this turned around for us? No?
Not that I don't wear up. Nobody's spoken about getting it turned around.
Time to light a fire.
It's a thirty-year agreement. Thirty years.
Yeah.
And fun fact, just to top it off, I pay a higher road tax now for my neighborhood. Some of my roads are getting big, but they're they're getting happening, the road tax for the gas tax.
Okay.
All right.
Any more questions about Rosen Streets? They don't get run over. Okay, parking wreck. Okay, Troy does not have anything for capital in parking wreck for next year, but he does in the following year. He's hoping to get new playground equipment and redesign and the replacement of the playground equipment at Ernie Mills.
What page are we on?
I'm sorry.
Page forty-two. We're going to switch figures in an hour and a half.
Just saying. I can't talk too fast. Okay, page forty-three. I'm just going to show you all the other departments. Now, I'll go through this quickly. The first one is building repair maintenance, and we are carrying forward the replacement of the city hall flooring again. And we'll keep carrying it forward until we get done. City Council, you have some capital items. That's the next box. We're looking to improve the audio/video system as well as adding a security system to the city hall. So capital projects for Council's budget is twenty thousand dollars. The next department is Building Inspector. That's where the new permitting and code enforcement software is split. It's split between three departments. It's split between Community Development, Building Inspector, and CRA. So you'll see one-third of that software in the Building Inspector Department's budget. The next box down, Comprehensive Planning and Development, that's where another third is budgeted for that new software. In the CLARs budget, very small now, three-hundred-and-ninety dollars for a scanner. We scan all our documents now, and especially into our financial system. And we're also needing two scanners for Finance Department. With the upgrade of Munis and the upgrade of our computers, our scanners are very old, and they're not compatible. And it's three-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars each. And so total capital in general fund budget, including the grants, almost two million dollars. So all in all, that's really impressive for our small budget. So if you think about it, half our budget is pretty much capital. Are there any questions on capital?
Just one, Jan, for me. On our audio/video. Is that a carryover from last year? It seems like that was approved quite a while ago.
No, I would have to look, and Mandy would be able to answer that. I don't have a current budget in front of me. So I can't answer that. Mandy, the manager's been asking if the audiovisual equipment is a carryover from this current year. I don't think it is.
No.
Something new?
No. Yes, new.
Because I know we have discussed it before. You know, people complaining they can't hear. Okay. Thank you very much. That's my question.
All right, let's go to page forty-six.
I'm wearing magnifying glasses to come down.
Okay, we're going to take one box at a time, instead of, Mandy, you trying to blow up the whole schedule. This is where I reconcile all of general fund to the departments that are, what revenues are applicable to what departments. The first box is Building Inspector. If you look at that, the budget is one-hundred-and-one thousand dollars. To offset that budget, you've got licenses and permit revenue. And I've identified these as new money or old money, which is coming in from reserve for capital items. So that's all identified throughout this. But you've got one-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand in license and permits. Public safety charges, three thousand. Public safety charges are higher inspection fees. It's a pass-through. And then I'd administrate a fee of a hundred dollars. So this department, with the revenues that go to it, is reflecting at this point in time a surplus of fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's what that amount in parentheses is. It means more revenue than expenses. Going down to the next box, Compplaining and Code Enforcement for Community Development. There's a budget of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, two-twenty-three. The direct revenues associated with that department, they are very small, but they're pass-through. Forty-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and four-thousand dollars. So there's a deficit in that department of one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. What that means is, all other general revenues have to support that department. There's no way to earmark a specific all-other revenue because you've got added lawn taxes, you've got your excise taxes, you've got miscellaneous revenue. So there's no real way to identify what piece of new, other new revenue is going to make up that one-hundred-and-sixty. It just does.
So, Jan, that also includes salaries.
Oh, well, the budget, the expenses. Yes, it's their entire budget. It includes capital, everything. Okay? So, Mandy, if you can scroll down to the Police Department, please. Okay, the Police Department's budget is one-million-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-six dollars. Of that budget, there's three thousand dollars that will go into the impact fee reserve. We're going to take it in as revenue. If you look down a little further, there's three thousand dollars in parentheses. That three thousand dollars is impact fee revenue we take in. But in order to balance the budget, I have to take it out and put it into a reserve. So that's why there's that three thousand dollars at the top. It's a wash. But revenue that's coming in to support the Police Department, you've got fines and forfeitures, new money based on tickets, eighty-nine-hundred dollars. You've got the one-cent sales tax money that we spoke to when we were talking about capital, fifty thousand dollars. And of course, that impact fee money. And then the transfer in from reserve for the police facility, the six-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, which will change by the amount of the pile road property in the next version.
So that in parentheses will be six-hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So the Police Department has to be, doesn't bring in enough revenue on their own, so they have to be supported by other general revenues of the city, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. If we scroll down just a little bit to sanitation. Okay, thank you. The sanitation budget, and again, this is waste management. A lot of it is pass-through. The budget is one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, seven-ninety-five. Residential billings, which are collected right from the residents, one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, three-hundred-and-seven dollars. FGUA collects that on the city's behalf. That we turn over a hundred percent to waste management. We pay them. There is an admin fee, which is on the water bill, that the city retains. So there's forty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars in revenue. And then the franchise, excuse me, the franchise fee that Waste Management remits to us, fifty-seven thousand, seventy-one dollars. So the sanitation department has a surplus, seventy-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. That money, any surplus, goes to support other expenses that need funding. Not earmarked. It's very difficult to say who's getting a piece of that seventy-seven thousand. We don't keep our books like that. Mandy, if you can scroll back up to the top, and let's go into the middle. Rosen Streets, and I'm going to rename it Troy's Department. And he's okay with that. Expenses of one-million, four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Again, this includes personnel operating and capital. Full budget. To offset that budget, there's that fifty-eight thousand dollar fifth-cent gas tax. There's also a sixth-cent gas tax, which is strictly for, well, you could use it for capital, but it's designed to provide support for his operations, ninety thousand. There's an eighth-cent motor fuel tax, seventeen thousand. There's also a motor fuel tax rebate, one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. What that is, is our gasoline third-party provider gives us a little bit of a rebate. Not much, but a little bit every quarter. And so we have eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. There's also a DOT lighting reimbursement for eighteen thousand, six-twenty-five. What that is, we turn over our traffic lights to the county for maintenance, and DOT would give us, you know, give us some money each year to offset our maintaining of traffic lights. Well, that's the highway safety lighting along Highway forty-one. The yellow lights, I guess they are white lights. You know, the shine at night?
Oh.
That light up the road.
Those lights.
Those ones, yes.
Sorry, Dan.
She's supposed to freak out. And so they're giving us a little bit of money. And it's formula-based, it's their formula for maintenance. So if we have to call Duke energy. And if Duke would bill us. I don't know if we've ever paid a bill for any kind of maintenance. I look at it as kind of just free. Then the next line, the thirty-two thousand, nine-forty-five, is old money. It's a transfer in from the one-cent sales tax reserve that we've got in the bank to help support Troy's capital. So in addition to the two-fifty, he needs a little more money than just two-fifty. So I'm bringing thirty-two thousand in from reserve. He's also getting two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, five-eighty-one, new sales tax money, new one-cent sales tax money. Then we've got his grant funds, his old ARPA grant funds that we received this year that going to reserve at the end of the year, so I'll bring it back in. And then his new grant money that he's going to receive next year of four-hundred-and-sixty. So all told, Troy's department is still in a deficit position where other general fund revenues have to support his department, one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, five-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Down to parking wreck. That's beach, that's strictly the beach because we charge revenue. The city beach budget for personnel and some operating items, fifteen thousand, two dollars. There's also two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars in Finance Department's budget for credit card fees because we're going to look to implement taking credit cards at the beach. That's been on the books for a couple of years. We just haven't had the opportunity.
At city beach.
City beach, yes. So, and based on actuals, the revenue for city beach is eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. So city beach is in a deficit position. We're not making enough money to cover the expenses, six-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, that other general fund revenues are supporting the city beach.
But, Jan, weren't we just a couple of years ago, even when we first started the implementation of fees, weren't we just making like two, three thousand dollars?
Oh, we, it was basically on our system. So we weren't making anything.
But yet, we still had these expenses.
Oh, absolutely. The city beach has always been in a losing position. The only time it did have a surplus was when we had tier-grade structure for the fees. I mean, non-residents were charged a different fee than the residents. But that was abolished a couple of years ago. So anyway, that's the position for the city beach. Down to cemetery. Cemetery is supposed to be self-supporting, which is what is reflected here. The expenses are fifty-five thousand, two-seventy. If people purchase lots and cribs in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four-seventy-two, that'll be great. Cemetery open and closed, seven-hundred-and-forty. Need preparation because we let people make payments, one-thousand, fifty-two. And then for every sale, a certain percentage is to be deposited directly into a perpetual care reserve. And so based on the sales, eighty-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars would be deposited into reserve. Because that money is being really taken out, not supporting expenses, I had to bring money back in. Twenty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So that city beach breaks even. So.
Cemetery.
I mean cemetery, sorry. So if we have more sales, like one year, we had over fifty thousand dollars in sales. And that was the first year of COVID. We were selling plots and niches as if we couldn't keep up. So, and that's what you want. You want your city beach, I'm sorry, your cemetery to be self-supporting. So if we keep having to take from reserve for non-capital needs, then we need to look at adjusting the prices for our plots. And we just did that. So.
Two years ago.
Two years. So we may have to do another analysis, or we just sit and wait because that's what your reserve is for, is to support your cemetery. So there's nothing wrong with taking it for that purpose. But, you know, doing an analysis every few years doesn't hurt. You know, are we competitive with the surrounding areas? You know, we don't want to be too reasonable that people from outside of Danell are looking, you know, to be buried in our cemetery, and our residents have to go elsewhere. Is that happening? Possible. Okay. Mandy, if you can go over to the last column at the top. Okay, here's all your other departments, non-revenue generating, although finance does generate a little bit of revenue with interest. I had to brag about that. But here are all your other departments. And below that, where it's, where you see less revenue, here are your expenses at the top, and there's less revenue. So here's all the revenue that is not assigned to another specific department that is earmarked basically to offset these administrative departments. There is a little bit of capital right here, fifty-seven thousand, four-forty. So what that is telling you is, there is actually a surplus of a million, forty-one dollars, nine-ninety-six. So from those un-earmarked revenues, un-earmarked. So from those un-earmarked revenues, un-earmarked departments, there's a surplus. Mandy, if you can scroll down a little to the last box, this is the summary. Here's that surplus, that million forty-one. Here's the surplus from sanitation, from the building inspector department. Here are your deficits. It does balance to zero. So you have enough surplus revenue to cover your deficits in your other departments. That's how the city's monies work. There, certain revenues are absolutely earmarked for specific departments. Other revenues have to be lumped together to cover everything else. There's, it, it would be very difficult to say, okay, what piece of state share of two hundred and forty-four thousand should finance get, should city clerk get? You know, it would, it would be a nightmare to try and do that. And that's not how governmental accounting really functions. But that's just to show you what departments are not supporting themselves and which ones are. So I hope this made some, some sense. If not, I would be happy to sit down with you and go over it again, and maybe try and find different wording to help it make sense to you all. But I think this schedule right here gives the clearest picture of where our money is going. Are there any questions?
Uh, I have one. And Jan, I, I have to tell you, this is getting scary, because I'm starting to understand this stuff.
That is scary.
And the more I understand this, Mandy knows, the more pesky I can be, but I. Keep me in the dark and you don't hear nothing from me.
Well, that's, and that's my goal, is to really try and help you all understand something that is very complicated.
Uh, let me see, oh. The one thing that, again, is an important item in the city, along with the roads, is code enforcement. And, uh, it seems to me like we're going about the code enforcement officer, or whoever's supposed to do it, kind of a piecemeal fashion. Where right now, we're just hiring someone and paid, uh, so many hours a week are gonna be paid for a code enforcement person? Or is there actually an attempt out there to try to find a full-time code enforcement person?
It's my understanding there is, uh, I'll defer to Georgina, but there is a position available. I don't, I guess we have.
Georgina, speak to your needs. Council really wants to know what you need on this.
Well, we're getting together a job description for the code enforcement officer to put out the advertising, and that should be happening soon, hopefully, within the next.
Is this for a part-timer, or someone we, uh, we?
It's.
Or is it a full?
Mandy.
We're looking for full-time, what are we looking for?
It's, it's for a full-time, I believe.
No, code enforcement, what council approved was a part-time position, twenty-four hours a week.
Twenty-four hours a week.
I'm hoping for a full-time, but.
So in your wish lists, you, you would like to have a full-time?
I would, but.
So how, Jan, when Georgina came with a very limited wish list, she didn't get her full-time person?
My only input would they give me, I don't ask why you're not submitting for full-time. That would be a discussion that I would assume has been held outside of my ears.
Okay.
Well, just a couple of months ago, we came to council with a proposal for a part-time. We, we came to council with a vote, what it would cost to have full-time and what it would cost to have part-time. Council approved for us to hire a part-time code enforcement officer. We've just been delayed in getting that done, because we needed to get a finalized job description, who authorized a starting pay range, um, eighteen dollars an hour. But we're just now getting to the point where we're finalizing that job description, preparing to advertise with the position.
Well, my comment on that, I, I do remember that. I think when council addressed that, it was right at the beginning of our push to start enforcing the codes. And I think council, at least I do, realize how much more there is to that, and how pervasive the issues are in Dan Allen. So my concern is, is the twenty-four hour that we thought was enough six months ago, is, is that enough? And really, Georgina, you know, if council makes the decision, and this is what's approved, and it's put in the budget, that's pretty much what you're gonna be living with for another year. So. Council kinda needs to have a little idea what, because right now, what I'm saying is, what we believe six months ago, I think, may be a little different. At least mine is, I've kind of seen how much time these things take. And, uh, it, Mandy, is it the part-time issue? I mean, is it, in other words, could there be more hours, or flexible, or? I'm just trying to figure out, I don't want to lock something in and then be told down the road that our code enforcement is ineffective, because we haven't allocated enough money to it.
If I could just.
Here's what, here's what we needed was, this is what was presented to you, um, what was this, back in May? So we, we did our, we did some homework. Full-time at seventeen dollars an hour was fifty-two thousand, three ninety-eight, which included benefits. The budget needed for a part-time at twenty-four hours a week, eighteen, we always pay a little, you know, a dollar or so more for part-time, because they're not receiving those benefits. Um, that was a cost of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. That is the salary that we currently have budgeted, is the twenty-five, four ninety-one. So if we, we elected to go to a full-time position, we have to find the extra money.
Which would mean cuts in other departments? Because I only have a twenty thousand dollar, um, leeway right now in this budget. So we would have to find savings in other departments, or increase the milage rate. Those would be your two options.
So speaking on Georgina's behalf. So we approve the budget with twenty-four hours. If that works, great. But let's say we find out we're five, six hours short of what they really need. In other words, we're always behind, and we're, we're just, and Georgina says, I need more manpower. How, how could we stay part-time and increase the hours if we would need it, if we'd find in practice it's not working?
You, we would need to amend the budget to allow for that, that additional cost, which you really don't want to do for operations. You, you really only want to, want to take from reserve for capital, but you could. And then the next budget year, we would have to work that into the budget. So you have the flexibility to do that, unless human resource policy doesn't allow you to do that, which I'm, I'm not, that's not my area. But you do have the flexibility that you could amend your budget to put more personnel hours in, at a later date.
Trying to think, and this is a sensitive subject, and we are starting to get into this. If we find that the twenty-four hours is insufficient, we have more going on than twenty-four hours can handle. It would not be accepted by the public for us to say, we can't get to it, because we don't have enough. And, I mean, people don't want to hear that. So if that does become an issue, I want to know.
Do you have the flexibility?
We, we can increase it. Now, Mandy, you know this, is there a certain point of part-time that you then can claim your full-time? Is it thirty hours?
Thirty hours, it has to remain under thirty hours. If it's thirty hours or more on a consistent basis, then we have to offer health insurance.
So we do have five-hour cushion right there? As we're approving twenty-four hours, and we could include five more, which is basically almost half a day's work.
And we could also, you know, as, as the year progresses, you may not have to do a budget amendment if we're underspending in other areas. So, because I always say, you know, a budget amendment if needed at year-end. Because I want to see, how are we doing throughout the year? Are, are we not spending some money, and maybe it, we can fund it without having to dip into reserves? But you do have the flexibility.
My last question is, the hourly wage that we're earmarking for this, is this enough to get a quality person? When people are getting minimum wage at fifteen dollars an hour, someone with the expertise as a code enforcement, are they gonna work for seventeen dollars an hour?
That could be negotiated, um, if we were to find someone, or if someone were to apply that was highly qualified, licensed, certified, and everything. I mean, we, as staff, have the ability to negotiate that if they said, you know, I'm not gonna do it for less than twenty-two dollars an hour. We could approve that, I don't know that that would actually require a budget amendment, um, but it may affect the budget at the end of the year slightly. And, and that too would depend on, um, like Jan said, if you're under budget in other departments, if we don't fill the position right away, um, you know, in the current fiscal year, which we were authorized to do, um, and we don't fill it until November or December, there will, you know, we budget for a full twelve months. So, you know, that would leave a little bit of wiggle room, because there would be a couple of months there where there wasn't anything spent on a code enforcement officer. But it.
I mean, in your opinion, is seventeen dollars an hour gonna do it?
Uh, we were gonna start the part-time at eighteen.
Eighteen, so is that gonna do it? It seems like this person has to have some pretty good skills.
Yeah. Um, I've, you know, I've found that, um, you know, if you, if you look, like Bell Blade is eighteen, eighteen seventeen, that's their, their rate. Sound, or August Sound CB just right at twenty. Uh, Port Richard is at seventeen fifty, um, to nineteen fifty, depending on the level of certification. So you've got your Marion County Level One at sixteen sixty-four, um, Level Two at eighteen thirty. And the average of Florida is anywhere from seventeen to twenty-two. So that's where we base the starting pay of eighteen on.
So, so Georgina, right now, is our current code enforcer, whoever that is, is that Dan, is Stan?
Dan.
How many hours a week is he putting into code enforcement?
Sixteen hours.
Sixteen? Is sixteen covering everything we need?
No.
No. If Dan was in here right now, and I asked Dan, how many more hours a week do you need in order to do what we're asking you to do? What do you think he would say?
He doesn't want the position.
I know, but how many more hours would he need? If you say sixteen is not enough now.
He's doing thirty-two hours in total. He has sixteen with us, sixteen for the works. Um, so he does thirty-two in total.
So I guess my question, I guess I have to ask the question right to get the right answer. If you, we increase Dan's hours to twenty-four, which is what our proposal is, would Dan then be able to do everything we're asking him to do right now?
I'm hoping that he could, but. You know, there's, there's a lot of demand for, for code enforcement right now. So I don't know that that's gonna cover everything, but we're, I mean, we're going based on what we got approved.
So I'm just saying that there's a possibility that twenty-four hours may not be enough.
It might not be enough.
And hopefully, we have a way of increasing that if we need to. Okay, well.
Not, but we'll, we'll work with that, for the time being.
And, and we could, you know, we could try this, if, if you guys want to give it a try. And, you know, if it, if it's not working out, and we see that we need full-time, then we can come back to council and ask for you to approve the additional expense and, and do a budget amendment.
We always know if we need money, we can go to Troy and get it.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Troy's Department. Okay, poor Georgina. Um, if there are no more questions? Okay, let's move on to milage rate, let's talk milage rate. Let's go to page forty-seven.
Mil, milage?
Milage.
Milage, the yellow page.
All right, everybody, wake back up.
What this table, the table shows you. I was asked, you know, to provide milage rate increments, and what that would equate to as far as, um, uh, revenue increase or decrease to the general fund, which is what this schedule shows you. The, now I've gone from six mils to ten. Um, the first highlighted row, row two, is your rollback. There is no, no change to general fund dollars or CRA, if you go rollback rate. Same revenue as we're bringing in this year. At six point one mils, eighteen hundred dollars more in general fund. Now, if you go to the, um, two rows, the, the two columns that are highlighted, that's where I'm jumping. So I'm jumping from the proposed milage rate column, all the way over to the two highlighted yellow columns. One, the first one represents general fund, the other, excuse me, CRA. So at six point one mils, general fund will, will gain eighteen hundred dollars, CRA three hundred and seventeen. At six point two mils, twenty-two thousand, two fifty-six, CRA thirty-nine, nineteen. So you can see what we can, um, um, lose or gain, depending on the milage rate you choose. Keeping in mind, we can't go above seven mils. Excuse me, and the sixth, row number eight, the six point five mil, that's what I've been talking about this whole time. General fund will see an increase of eighty-three thousand, six, six twenty-two, and CRA fourteen thousand, seven twenty-three. The next schedule I'd like to show you is, this was a request by Councilwoman Henshaw, what would be the change in taxes from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two? Mandy, if you, no, if you can call up file number four.
Oh, number four.
Yeah.
I would say, I don't think I wanted that.
What I've presented here are four scenarios. If your property value was seventy-five thousand, with a fifty thousand dollar exemption, so you're taxed in twenty-twenty-one, you were taxed on twenty-five thousand, you paid a hundred and sixty-two fifty. In twenty-twenty-two, with our eight percent increase in property value, you're taxed on approximately thirty-one thousand, or two oh one fifty. You would pay an increase of thirty-nine dollars for the year.
For a year.
For one year. This is all based on years. If your house is valued at a hundred thousand with a fifty thousand dollar exemption, in twenty-twenty-one, you paid three twenty-five. In twenty-twenty-two, you can expect to pay approximately three seventy-seven. So an, an extra fifty-two dollars for the year. Going down, if, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, your, your taxable value is a hundred thousand, you pay six hundred and fifty dollars. With the increase in property value in twenty-twenty-two, you'd pay seven twenty-eight, or an extra seventy-eight dollars for the year. And then the last scenario is on a two hundred thousand dollar home with a fifty thousand dollar exemption, you'd pay an additional hundred and four dollars for the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That would be something great to put on Facebook. Where people could see it in black and white.
So, you know, they're not huge increases, but they are increases because our property values have gone up.
Now, Vice Mayor Henshaw would know this better than I. There's not that many one hundred thousand dollar houses.
Oh, yes, there are.
In the city of Dan Allen?
Show me where.
Show you where? Have to say all the riverfronts, all the Blue Cove.
All the riverfront.
All the riverfront. Um, and, and all I'll also do is not a house in the city of Dan Allen that would barely, I, I, if, if I could buy a house for a hundred thousand right now, I would buy four of them.
That's what I'm saying, that, they're not there, right?
Oh, no. Oh, I thought you meant that we didn't have houses over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I'm sorry.
No, I could do another chart.
So, right, right now, if you walk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood, Jan.
Yeah, you took it exactly.
I, I did opposite, sorry, I was.
See, Mandy, you're not the only one that takes the wrong. That's a private.
And you might be able to double it, I don't know, without doing the math, but you take that, the last line item.
And you might be able to double it. I don't know without doing the math, but you take that, the last line item, a two hundred thousand dollar home, jump it up to four hundred thousand.
Blue Cove, Blue Cove, four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand for a Blue Cove home, five hundred thousand. It's not unusual now.
Maybe another couple hundred dollars for the year at six point five mils.
So someone who has a three hundred and fifty to four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar home, which is now, it's incredible. Could say that a few years ago. They may be looking at a two hundred dollar tax.
And I'm just, without doing the math.
Well, that'll get their attention. A two hundred dollar tax increase on your property, definitely gets people's attention.
Keep in mind, the city is also paying increased costs for everything that the residents are paying for too.
And so are the residents.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're going to, they're going out shopping and they're seeing four dollars and fifty cent gas and.
So if, if you're looking at decreasing the millage rate. Department heads would have to come together and will have to find places to cut. As it stands right now, not with these couple unknowns and only a twenty thousand dollar cushion. Maybe it wouldn't be severe, but I don't know at this point. It just depends on where you all want to go to. But you're looking at cuts for the most part. Not capital, because capital is not, has nothing to do with the millage rate. It's all operations.
I, I would think a homeowner that would get a tax increase of a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars more than the previous year. Which may include me. I would not be real excited about that. My city's expenses have gone up, I understand, but so has everybody else's.
Now.
So I, I would be leaning more toward cutting it somewhere in the middle between the six point five and the rollback rate. And still get a tax increase, but not hit someone with the full brunt of it at the six point five.
So you're looking at, you're looking at, I'm just ballparking without doing math, about a fifty thousand dollar increase to revenue in general fund. That we, the departments, will need to go and find fifty thousand dollars.
I think the city would be saluted if, if we did something like that in this day and age. I think we'd come out with a report that the city has reduced the millage rate. And it's really not a big amount, fifty thousand dollars, that's not a big amount of money going from six point five to six point.
Well, and let me just say something about that. We just discussed how Georgina might, I mean, it all sounds like the eighteen dollars an hour is going to cut it for a part-time person. And if they do, it's probably going to have to be thirty hours or twenty-nine hours. So right there, that's, that was almost thirty thousand additional if we have to go full time.
And, and possibly, this is just food for thought, what decrease in service will be affected, which we won't know until we as department heads get together and figure out where can we trim our budgets. Some budgets, I'll tell you right now, finance can give up sixty dollars. That's for luncheons, for networking, for finance and finance practices. Other departments, maybe they can give up more. And that's without me cutting personnel.
So with an item, for instance, the thirty thousand dollars for carpeting.
That's capital.
So that would be totally different.
That's different, yeah. I'm not talking any capital items because that's all funded with other dollars. This, this is, personnel would be affected or your supplies, may, maybe hot patch. As in, just as an example. I'm not sure what, what else unless another department head could come up with an example from their department, what they would give up to come to the decrease that's needed. I'm not saying it can't be done. But I still have unknowns. I don't know how much communication service tax revenue we're going to get. If we get a decrease from what I've anticipated, you're talking even more than a fifty thousand dollar.
But the point to, to keep out there is we're not decreasing, we're actually increasing, but not increasing as much as we would with six point five.
You're decreasing from what has been requested in next year's budget.
But, but still at six point three, everybody's still going to get a tax increase based on it, right?
But is Troy going to have to give up his extra person that he's requesting? Is the chief going to give up his part-time river person? I'm not sure where those cuts would come from. That would be a discussion to have with the department heads.
So how many different departments are there?
You've got Troy's Public Works. How many departments do you have?
Mandy, how many departments are there?
Clark Finance, Community Development, Roads and Streets, Parks and Rec, Building Repair Maintenance Cemetery, Garage.
We've got a lot of departments. Don't forget.
So if you, if we're talking about fifty thousand dollars and everybody gave up five thousand dollars.
Finance doesn't have five thousand dollars to give up without cutting staff.
And some do.
Absolutely, but I'm just speaking.
Tell me how we can do it, not tell me all the reasons we can't.
I can't speak for other departments.
Yes.
Put the mic to you.
Jan, because we're, we're talking fifty thousand, sixty thousand, forty thousand. If I'm looking at this chart right, I want to make sure I'm seeing the number right. The mayor's saying if we work to cutting back to six point three mil, then our increased revenue is forty-two thousand. That is what, eighty-three, six twenty-two. So what is our actual, what do we have to trim from the budget? Forty thousand. So we would have to trim forty thousand dollars out of day-to-day operations. Okay, so forty thousand dollars at a day-to-day operations, that's nothing capital. That means any materials, standard vehicle maintenance, personnel, overtime. Special events, barricades, that's your day-to-day operations. So forty thousand dollars and then we're talking three major departments, right, or four major departments, Community Development, City Clerk, Police Department and Roads and Streets. Now, I understand Roads and Streets is what, eight categories of the budget. Cemetery, parking wrecks, am I close, A categories, guessing? I don't want to say that I want to do it, but I will tell you this, Jan and I will be working together tomorrow and early next week to see if we can do something.
This is just my idea. Council hasn't. Council hasn't, this is just me throwing out there, council hasn't weighed in. So, you know, you, you don't have to jump on the horse yet.
Well, what I want to try and do is figure out what, like Jan said, where is the impact going to hit our departments? Without impacting personnel. We know that without the personnel, operations are going to stop.
We have struggled as a city for so long. And I, I'm paying the high prices too. But if we're ever going to get ahead, like we're seeing a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel, to take us back now, in my opinion, it, it will just continue to hurt us going forward in the future. How do we make up that forty thousand dollars in the future? Will we be able to make it up in twenty-twenty-four budget? Who knows? That's, that's a big unknown. But, and you all know, we have been struggling for years. I've been here seventeen years, seventeen years, we have struggled as a city. We can't do roads. That's just my opinion. I understand where you're coming from, where we will do whatever we're directed to do, absolutely. But my opinion is to take another step back is, is just going to keep us in the hole. And we are in the hole. We're just not as deep as we have been.
And if I may, I mean, I sat up here at City Council back in the two thousands. And we literally were taking out eighty-nine dollars out of budgets for magazine subscriptions. We were taking, I had to sit here and ask our employees who are so dedicated to us then and now to literally go without a pay, pay raise. I think we gave a whopping five hundred dollar bonus to somebody. And if you added that out over twelve months, it was like a dollar fifty or whatever it was. When we, and, and look, again, you and I are paying these taxes too. I mean, if, if you're having to pay an additional two hundred thousand, at least one month of your salary that you're paying yourself can go back to it, but it's sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents per day, per month. On a two hundred dollar increase to our property tax, and it's sixteen dollars that I can put into my grocery bag. I understand that fully, one hundred percent. You know, and everybody says, I want a fixed income. Well, even an employee that works forty-five hours a week is on a fixed income because their boss doesn't give them extra money every day. So I get it. I have struggled through this recession that we think God got through. But you never know what tomorrow's going to bring and sixteen dollars a month could be extra to me that I don't have. I understand that. But for us to start trying to take away, I mean, if it was a two hundred thousand and we were just rolling in the money, yeah, I, I'd say roll us back as far as we can go, Jan. I mean, I was hoping we could go back some in all honesty. But I heard the mayor say, we're probably going to have to give you a full time at least. We're probably, and then Mandy's like, we're probably going to actually have to pay them more money. We're not quite sure yet, just get thirty hours. Then, once we start depreciating things, we are now depreciating what services we're giving to you and I who are paying the taxes. And I don't know if I want my services or my operations to be cut any. From, I'm, I'm willing to pay for a good employee that does their job, that knows that there's room for growth. And that there is an opportunity for us to save money down the long run, but not when you're just trying, like you said, Jan, to get out from the holes that we're in. And we're, and we're having to do things that we haven't had to do before. And this year, yeah, we're having to add new mucis things and, and all those kinds of things. And those are hitting us when we don't really need them to hit us. So, yeah, I would personally love to go back to six point one if I had my, you know, but the gussies, we have to find eighty thousand dollars in the budget. So I just don't know how, looking at it from a professional businesswoman, looking at it from doing my own budget at home and looking at it from doing these budgets over a long time. I just don't know how it would make common sense to go back. And I get that we're all hurting because trust me.
I think we should hold this conversation till our next workshop. But I've been watching what's going on with Ocala. They're already paying, what, nine percent? Yeah, nine millage rate. And this county is growing, it's expanding.
Marion County has increased their billage rate, proposed millage rate for next year.
Exactly.
Their increase is very minimal, but it also nets them fourteen million dollars.
Yeah, kidding. Yep.
Makes our eighty-three thousand.
Then we're going to have even more because we're going to be paying Marion County taxes, us.
I mean, also the composition of this town has changed greatly. We have more wealthy people buying and investing in so on. The, the people who are going to be paying the biggest increases, I don't see where they, they have a right to complain for what, you know, because their investment is growing. Okay, if you buy property here in town now, and we see it with the B and B investors and so on, they know what they're doing. I mean, how can they complain if we dump up the, you know, six point five? And I guarantee if where they own other properties, they're already paying nine point something.
The workshop.
Seriously.
And well, and two.
Advertised. It has been.
These are, these are advertised for the public.
That you know what I'm saying. I'm saying on this specific subject. If you want to, if you want to go out and campaign on raising taxes.
Oh, whoa, 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 we are not talking campaigning and politics. No, ma'am.
No.
No, ma'am.
It's all those thoughts.
Okay, but it's just, I, we also need a final, final numbers, the revenue that I'm waiting on and our insurances. It's like, what is that going to do to us?
Exactly.
And which I, I don't know at this point. Hopefully, maybe nothing, maybe we'll make out a little bit ahead. Because don't forget, right now, we've got a twenty thousand dollar cushion. Granted, that's in a causal contingency line, but you could take that and reduce your millage rate by twenty thousand. Whatever percentage that works out to be. It may be six point four two one six, but it would still be a reduction. So I, I agree to, to continue this conversation. But we need final numbers because our work, I'm kind of grasping right now. And yeah, I say you have a twenty thousand dollar cushion. It may, I'm hoping it's more.
But Jan, just real quick, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just real quick, when are you expecting those final numbers of income? I know, is it before we have to vote on our final millage rate?
Oh, you mean, you force it. Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so, so that's, so let's say, let's say you said that we're only going to get four percent increase in whichever one we're still waiting for, I can't remember off the top of my head. But OMG, we just got a landslide of twelve percent, what number might be. So now we have another hundred thousand dollars that we were not expecting. Then we can go back and go down to the six point two five.
The goal is always to go into your September hearings with a budget that is acceptable to you all. Then you hear the public comment. Then if you rethink things or want to change things, that's your opportunity. But the goal is to present a budget to the public that you all could live with.
Well, I have a pretty good idea. And I think we all know how the public thinks. They're not so concerned how much we spend on. I usually, as much as what their tax bill is. I know that. I, I've run for office. I know what that means to people. A hundred, two hundred dollar tax bill means everything to a lot of people. Even, even if we rolled it back to six point four, six point three, I'm just still in a number out there. We're still going to be, everybody's still going to get a tax increase because of the appreciation of the property, correct? Right? So all we're doing is limiting, kind of have a partnership with them that we're limiting your tax increase.
Well.
I think that, that would sell really, really, even, even if it was six point four, people would salute this council for trying to join in and apart, partnership with them, realizing how much, you know, their taxes are going up.
Well, after the next workshop, I hope to have better numbers. And then we will need direction from you all, what you really want us to do. Because for us to get together as departments and figure out where we can cut the budget, that takes time. So to wait till the last minute for us to do that, it's a lot of work. Plus recreating all these documents that I have to recreate. So, so that's all I'm asking is, if I have better numbers for you at the next workshop, that we get direction from you all, what millage rate you want us to focus on.
That's fair.
And that will happen at the next workshop.
That's what I'm, I'm really hoping.
She's not in charge.
The next workshop is August third. So it's not that far away.
Jan, do we have that?
It's on the calendar.
Had a budget workshop? I thought that was just a regular workshop.
No, it's, there's a budget workshop.
Well, that is the same date that Georgina had wanted to have, the planning commission had requested a joint workshop with council and the historic board. And Georgina, you said you wanted to have that prior to the regular workshop on August third?
Right. It was tentatively scheduled from four to five on the third.
Okay, if Jan, if you've already got a budget workshop scheduled for August third prior to the regular workshop, we'll have to change that date.
And this calendar has been out since May.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was, there was a conflict there. But we'll, we'll have to change that date, Georgina.
No, I don't have any information, at least from a revenue perspective, to know. Then it could be canceled. I mean, the, the state is saying they'll have my revenue number in July. Then it could be canceled. I mean, the, the, the state is saying they'll have my revenue number in July.
So you'll know by July thirty-first.
But they've been late before. It's just communication service tax is such a, a large number to fund operations. That's why I'm so focused on. And I don't wanna tell you if it comes in lower, what I'll do. Just don't come in my office because I'll be crying.
She'll be sitting in the corner rocking back and forth.
And as far as, um, our, our liability insurance and things like that, and I can, I can speak to our insurer and see if they can give me some indication. If maybe what I've estimated in the budget, we can feel pretty, so then that leaves that number. So I'm hoping to have more information for you at the next workshop. I'm gonna decrease the capital. I, but as of right now, everything will stay the same. And then hopefully at that workshop. Now, there's also one, ten, another workshop tentatively scheduled for August seventeenth. So.
I won't be here.
Could you participate?
Nope.
Okay.
Better be here either.
That's when I have another one if needed. Then we go into September hearings.
What about the fifteenth?
Of August?
Yes, ma'am. That's a Monday?
Monday. I, I can work into anybody's schedule. So if we're gonna change it, that at least gives, if we're gonna can, especially if we cancel the third, because I don't have any new information, then, then the fifteenth, we should at least have one in August before we get to September. Because we're gonna need direction on the military.
I, I mean, I'm good. I, I'm just out on the seventeenth to the nineteenth. Which is a third, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
What about, and I don't know what day of the week that it is. What about August tenth?
That's what I was.
Well, the tenth is better.
Why don't we move the third to the tenth and cancel the seventeen?
We.
Or, and, and then put.
I think we need to leave two days open in August.
So do the tenth and the twenty-four.
The tenth and the twenty-four.
Manny, we had tentatively put the tenth for another workshop with the planning board.
For planning board.
To discuss the, uh, short-term rental ordinance at five thirty. And that's on the tenth.
I don't, I mean, I don't mind doing Thursday, the eleventh.
Okay.
And August the fifteenth, if we need it.
Well, that's back to back. If we did Thursday, the eleventh.
Like the twenty.
Then we could do.
Twenty-second?
Yeah.
That would give before the September meetings, September. That's actually gonna give you two weeks.
Two weeks. It's just all these documents I prepare.
Either that or the eighth. We could have a special budget workshop prior to the council meeting.
But I hate that we'd be rushed. I'd rather do the ninth.
Okay, historic boards on the ninth.
They can actually meet. And I'm not being rude, but these.
If we did it on the eight, we could start at three o'clock again and you'd have two hours.
Right.
Because your CRA starts at five. So you could, you could do that.
I think two hours would work. We wouldn't be going through the entire question.
Free up the third for your joint planning meeting.
For when?
It would, if we meet on the eighth prior to the council meeting, do a special budget workshop. We won't need the one on the third. So you could proceed with your planning uh, meeting that, that they've requested jointly with council and the store for. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
You better write that down during Friday.
Yeah, eight, eight, at three o'clock. That's my daughter's birthday.
And when would the second one be if needed in August?
I would say the twenty-fourth.
No, no, I thought it'd have to be like that Monday. Is that the twenty-second? Because she has to get all the documents changed over.
Okay, so twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
All right, so eight, eight and eight twenty-two.
Because that gives me ten days before the first public hearing. To get everything posted to the website like I'm supposed to as far as proposed budget and get everything situated. So.
Okay, we're gonna do that one at three o'clock also?
Sure.
Everybody good with that?
Rather do it. We're not exhausted.
So that's, oh, eight and twenty-second or twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
And then we'll cancel the third and the seventeenth.
Until the third. You still have joint workshop on the third.
Well, I'm just talking about canceling the budget workshop. Yes.
Twenty-second is at three P M.
Okay. And hopefully I'll have good news at the next workshop.
I am sure you go.
Okay, that's, that's the goal, is to bring you all good news and not be negative daily like I am. What I see. Um, okay. Do you wanna discuss CRA?
No.
Hopefully it'll be quicker.
Go for it.
All right, so if we go to CRA is.
What schedule am I on, Jan?
I'm sorry, what?
What schedule?
Uh, we're still on, uh, num- uh, number one post-budget.
Page fifty-one.
Uh, page fifty-three. No, page forty-two.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-one. I'm sorry. Actually, let's go to the highlights. Just the page.
Oh, these highlights.
Okay. Uh, the, the budget is prepared at same old rate, always true. Marion County is getting CRA a little more money because they're proposing a little bit of an increase. And it's, it's like, um, I wanna say maybe a few tenths of a percent increase is what they're proposing. So it's about six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars. You write up, uh, the Main Street program support, two thousand one ninety-five, where CRA is helping to subsidize that. East Penn Avenue Cedar Street and City Hall solar lighting, twenty-six thousand dollars. And then a portion of the new permitting and code enforcement software, one-third at two thousand dollars. Projects carried forward from this current fiscal year, the wayfinding signage, which carried forward the budget of two sixty-five with the expectation that it will come in less. Uh, Blue Run Park restrooms, incre- the city's contribution increased from twelve thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then a city hall digital sign at thirty-five thousand. If we turn to page fifty-eight. Oh, excuse me. And this is, um, series capital plan. A hundred and, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't change that. The first amount should be a hundred and seventy-five thousand. On line three, on line number one. And, uh, for the, uh, Blue Run Park restrooms, we will make on line four, we will make our final contribution to the, uh, bike trail to bring our total contribution to up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yes.
Um, the digital, uh, city hall sign at thirty-five thousand, the wayfinding sign in signage at two hundred and sixty-five thousand, the permitting and code enforcement at two thousand, and then of course the solar lighting at twenty-six thousand. So, um, total capital in CRA, five hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
My going to pass seven, forty, forty-nine, five forty-nine, two forty.
Right, but I have to add two thousand dollars to that for the Blue Run Park restrooms. So bring five forty-nine, two forty, exactly.
Okay. Don't confuse me.
At least I'm not saying since September. Let me say it each. If you go to the, uh, to page sixty. This is the, oh boy, red doesn't show up very well. Okay, I will change the colors. I tried to color code so it'd be easier to read. And I apologize. I didn't think that would be non-readable.
But I can see my.
Yeah. But basically, you're looking at the very last column is our proposed budget. And, um, in the CRA fund, the, the fund, uh, is, is anticipated to start out with about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's on line one. New revenue both from the city and the county and some interest income, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. So total pot of money, uh, anticipated to be available, almost one point one million dollars in CRA. Then the budget breaks out. You've got your personnel, your operating, you've got grants. We've got, um, the Main Street program. We've got the Blue Run Park, um, contribution plus the other capital projects for a total budget of six hundred ninety-five thousand nine fifty-one. Which leaves in the pot of money in CRA in total, you've got your three hundred and fifty thousand for the bike trail and then leftover forty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty. Requirement with CRA is all money has to either be budgeted or earmarked, appropriated, non-budgeted, but earmarked. So that forty-seven thousand two eighty was just put to property acquisition or development of parking. But one thing that we have to be cautious about, we need money to start every new fiscal year. CRA can't spend every penny they have each fiscal year. Otherwise, they're gonna be borrowing from general fund.
Right.
To supplement their operations until December taxes come in.
Yep.
All their money is in their bank by December thirty-first every year, whether the city has received it or not. We have to give it to them. So there has to be money left over end of each year to get them through the first three months. So that's where this forty-seven thousand comes in. I've spoken to, to Georgina about it. And I'm looking at maybe about a minimum of fifty thousand to be available at the beginning of each fiscal year to get them through. Typically, we don't spend all the CRA money in a given year, so it hasn't been a concern until Troy took so much of it for his parking lot.
Good job, Troy.
It's never been a concern like I'm expressing now. But now we just have to be a little cautious and recognize we can't spend every penny each year.
So that two thousand dollars that we had on the other page, is it need to have something added or deducted here?
No, because I have it correct.
Yeah, it's correct.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, that was just in the capital spreadsheet.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
It's, it's correct on the, on the other schedules and in the financial system.
Okay, that's fine. I was just thinking.
So that's CRA in a nutshell. CRA is usually really cut and dry. Georgina gets to pick the, you know, pretty much the projects that she sees, you know, CRA.
The CRA will be part of our next workshops also.
It will, but if there's nothing else to add, it'll be part of September for sure.
Right.
Uh, in August, we may not need to discuss CRA anymore. If you're in agreement to what.
If there's a question, we can, oh, it'll be in front of us.
It will, because it's gonna be in your budget.
What I'm suggesting to you is we're at the three-hour mark and this is when the focus isn't quite what it was at the first thirty minutes.
That's why I spoke real fast.
Yeah, so the CRA, I, I mean, I speak for myself. I'm not focusing on these numbers as I was two hours ago, right? I don't know how you guys do a ten-hour day. I'm done at three hours.
I do, I do numbers all day.
Tell a lie, by the way.
Very, very big left side of the.
I don't give you your job, Jan.
You're not in all right? And I've gotta go home and work now.
I do not have that big left side.
So hopefully, um, I've presented, um, a fairly workable document for you all. This document right here, if you wanna see what is budgeted in every line item from, um, how much hot patch, Troy, I'm sorry.
She already said hot pants at first.
To what we have, the professional services, you know, if this is the real detail to the budget.
That, that's, that's, that's involved.
We'll do it.
Like one page for it.
That'll keep you awake.
All right.
Put everybody's wants.
All right.
So, and, and I hope that, that I've left you with more of an understanding of how our revenues tie into our expenses and how it's kind of allocated between the departments. That, that was my one goal. I wanted to try and get across today. But if you wanna, you know, see me, uh, oh, Louise left.
I think so, yeah. She had a phone call.
If you wanna come and sit down with me and talk about it, my door's open.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask because I know we've been getting a lot of questions on the emails. But if we came in and sat down with you, we could get those.
Things shirking.
That would be amazing.
Okay, Jan, concluded?
I'm done.
All right, very, very good. Thank you so much. All right, uh, I see Ms. Kenny left. Please make note of that.
I think she just stepped in the conference room.
Oh, you think so?
Took a phone call.
Oh.
Took off.
I, I thought I saw her walking off the door. Okay, council comments, uh, start off with Ms. Williams, any, anything to add?
Kudos to our finance. Our finance director, whatever your position is for the report, very good. I, for one, would like to pay lower taxes. I would love for that rate to be rolled back. But you know, I've gotten to the point in my life where I don't worry about things anymore. I take one day at a time. You know, and there's always going to be somebody that's not happy. There's always gonna be. And I would hate to see funds have to be cut and, um, an increase in the workload for the staff that's already working hard. Thank you.
I have one comment. It's, it's response to a, a lot of emails have gone conversations on the phone and so on. That is our police department. The budget has doubled in four years because of the addition of the construction, prospective construction. So a lot of people have taken note. And question is, where, where are we gonna go with that? I mean, if we need, is it possible to take some of that money out of the police department budget, put it in the general fund, so we don't have to raise millage rate?
I'd have to get with the chief and where can we cut, where can he cut?
Fifty thousand dollar new cruiser every year?
That's capital.
That's capital, okay. I, correct, correct, correct.
Police department facility is capital.
Yeah, just wondering where else.
It's not general funds, so it's capital, right?
Well, it's general, uh, uh, it's all general.
Right, yeah.
But it's capital, it's not operating.
Right.
In order to reduce the millage rate, it, it only affects operating personnel or, um, what's called operating, which would be your professional services, your legal, your, um, uh, parts and pieces. That's all.
I'll have, um, more questions on that next workshop.
And that, and chief.
Where I'll get with you on it.
Have to speak to his budget.
Yep.
If you cut personnel, you know, we've taken, you know, new position requests out of the budget, so as not to increase the budget. Since personnel is your, one of your largest expenses.
Yep.
That's why I'm mentioning that, um, chances are personnel will be affected. And maybe not. So I'm hoping if that revenue comes in more, then we'll be in a lot better shape. And then I can even maybe propose a cut to the millage rate. That's what I would like to be able to present to you. And then you, you guys with it wherever you wanna take it. But if I can present that, that, that would be, that would be really good.
Yes, it would be.
You know, give you at least a starting point, if nothing else. So.
Okay, anything else?
Just kudos to all the department heads. I know y'all never try and overspend and you're conservative. We all take it, we all take this budget very serious. Every single year, our fiduci, you know, our fiduci, uh, our responsibility is to the citizens and to this budget. And we make sure that we are being as frugal as we possibly can without, because I have seen the city do exactly pinch, you know, roll things back to make it look politically happy. Um, which, yeah, it works for me when I don't have to pay more taxes, but then your, your roads go down. Um, which, yeah, it works for me when I don't have to pay more taxes, but then your, your roads go down, I mean. Ask Troy what's underneath our, our ground and our sewer lines and stuff, because. That's why we had to get rid of the water system, because we. Cheated.
Money.
So we, we, you know, we tightened that belt so tight that we actually hurt ourselves in the end. So, I, I, I applaud it, I love it. I, I've seen how that game works sadly. Alright, I love y'all, you did a fantastic job, I cannot thank each and every one of you and all the employees for everything. You've done to get this budget season going again, it's so much fun.
Okay, um. Talk with Andrew, he has some ideas on our code of conduct, a couple things need to be cleaned up. One is the statement on what council during the elections as far as their participation. Way it's written, it basically says we're not supposed to participate in any way.
Not supposed to what?
Participate.
Participate in the elections.
Okay, campaign.
But, uh, yes, Andrew has said that that would be in, in contradiction to First Amendment rights. So that needs to be looked at. Um, also, I want to re, he has other things he wants to bring up, he said he would, um, talk with Mandy. Uh, also, I would like to, to discuss correcting the resolution where we want public comment. At the beginning of all meetings and all workshops, I see no objection to that, like even today. No, we, we had no one at the beginning, but if someone would have come up and says, hey, I spent five hours looking at this budget. And I want to point this out to you before you go into discussion, that would be very, very helpful to us. To know that before we go, so to, right now, Tim looks like he's sitting on the edge of a seat, he wants to address us. Well, he might have been able to say something to us three hours ago that could have helped this process, but he couldn't, he had to sit here. So I, I see no, no harm in that, in his chair, I can control the amount of time. Also, this is going to be a little contrary to me throwing out the suggestion. Of a rollback, at least a minor one, is that I, I have to say. That when I go out in the city all about, I see Troy everywhere. Troy is the face of the city. I, I would say Troy as much as anyone has turned the. Residents' perception of Don Ellen around with his positive approach, gung-ho attitude, I can get it done. Just lead me in the right direction and I'll make it happen for you, and, uh. I would like to reward Troy for his effort, he's going beyond, he's working more than forty hours a week. He's coming in on Fridays, he's working on Saturdays, uh, he's working at night.
Yes, it's his phone when I call them after hours.
So, you know, I'd like to put it on the, on the next workshop, possibly, uh. Uh, consider, you know, we don't want to get into a compression thing where his salary would. Push other people that have been here longer, but, uh, I don't, I don't see why we can't give him maybe a three thousand dollar. For his efforts, he, if he was keeping track of the time that he worked beyond forty. He would have so much comp time that he could take a week off. Uh, and I'm aware of that, and I appreciate it, Troy, and I have to say. Out of all the comments people say about staff in the city, you, you really are, you, you've done a lot to turn things around, and. I would like to give council the opportunity to reward you for your efforts.
That three thousand equates to about thirty-six hundred, just to.
So put that, could you put that on the workshop?
On the, the regular workshop for August third?
Yeah, and then also the revision of some of the codes of conduct, we'll talk about that.
Is that something I need to work in the budget now, or is that?
Well, you just might say that we don't know yet, but it's might be coming your way, so think about it.
I'll just put it in there.
And then council will decide, you know.
You know.
They may, council may say.
Just be prepared to make that adjustment, should council approve an amount, but they haven't approved an amount yet.
Well, yeah, I think without a compression issue, I think up to three thousand dollars doesn't create any compression issues. Yeah, one last thing, Mandy, we really have to get after, we have to try to re-establish contact with the county. On this restroom project, you know, everything's pretty much lined up, even Commissioner Zalek is. As he's campaigning, he's going out, uh, as part of his campaign, talking about how they have put together. The restroom project, he's actually using that, so whatever we need to do to kind of get this thing going, it's just kind of come to a. It's there, but nothing seems to be happening with that. So that's my comments, thank the council, and Jan, thank you, thank you so much. Alright, uh, that concludes comments, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, Tim, have, have at it, we might even, we might even give you an extra minute or two.
Hopefully not. Tim Enske, one-two-one-four-zero, Maple Street, here in Don Ellen. Uh, first of all, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Um, everybody knows Troy knows, uh, how hard he works, he's out there all the time. Uh, blah, 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 and the other thing, uh, budget times are always rough, tend to take it pretty personal. Uh, not me, but, uh, the people that make up the budgets. Uh, uh, I won't sit here and give my resume, but I work for a company that definitely ate their own, put your budgets together. Twice a year, they send corporate folks out to scrutinize the budgets, and they were never generally very polite about it, they were. Heartless, cold bean counters.
Hey, my daddy was one of them.
Right, it goes, we need them, we need them. The, uh, okay, not, what I had down here is, uh, um, it doesn't have to be now, but I'd like the minimum wage increase. Um, uh, thing explained, just to verify this being implemented correctly, because it is a huge budget impact. I understand the bill and all that kind of stuff, but I'd like to see the logistics of it to make sure that we are implementing it correctly. Um, and, uh, no more said about that. Um, I was going to touch on the full-time code enforcement, I think part-time is a good starting point, we know we did this back in May, blah, blah, blah. I think full-time is too expensive, once code enforcement starts at some point, we only. So, only so many properties here in this city, uh, things should start be, get better after a while, then we won't need a full-time, but now we have a full-time position. Blah, blah, blah. Um, uh, six point five, I still think is way high, uh, I was almost waiting for. The presentation where it said it's only going to be this much per property, I always like taking my numbers and turning them into percents, because that's how I do. My money, I'm either making a percent or not making a percent. Uh, eight percent is an enormous amount of money, and we're getting nickel and dime to death. Um. Uh, year after year after year, so the eight percents add up, the hundred and fifties add up, you know, blah, blah, blah. Um, the, uh, other thing is, when we speak in general large terms, um, and a lot of rhetoric. About why we can't reduce operating costs, w- we're not going to get anywhere, we're going to stay in the same do loop that we're in. Um, the only way that I've seen to really, uh, back up the budgets is to sit down line by line with the department heads. And go through everything they've got, okay, I believe everybody is honest as the day is long, but I've gone through this budget line by line. And I see things that kind of look like they might be duplicated, something over here, this also seems to be down here, a little confused. There, uh, it looks like we're only asking for one, but in the budget, I see two. Budgeted for personnel type things, uh, both within Troy's and the police department, um, and it may be a mistake on my part. Um, and. Uh, only other comment. That I have is, uh. Uh, I realize the county says and the values have gone up on properties, okay, so, you know, a- and I'm not picking on anybody by the, with their comments. But we only, you only realize, uh, an investment increase if you sell your property. Um, a lot of us have retired to, and don't plan on ever moving again, to be buried and not do it again, so we're never going to realize. An investment, uh, on our homes if we've moved here forever. Um, and, you know, so. I, I don't feel that because somebody's value have gone up, it's okay to raise their taxes, they're not going to see that return, uh, e- ever. And I think that's the way most people are here in Don Ellen, uh, feel, and I won't bore y'all anymore, thank you.
Hey, Tim, just a heads up, you might want to go ahead and get your plots now, because we're pretty affordable, you're paying on dying here. So you might want to go out and get your plots now before we go up on the prices.
Ms. Odom, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
I do not believe so, but let me go check.
Okay, uh, please note it is now six oh seven, and I, can we have a motion to adjourn?
See you later, alligator.
Second.
The motion, I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.